Things I'm observing or participating in, I so wish that was there in person.
Mm-hmm.
You're like, I lose so much.
Yeah, I know. Is the live streaming on YouTube new, Neil?
Uh, we'll see. We didn't advertise it tonight. But I thought this was a good chance to see if it's.
See if we can do it.
It seems like it went through and worked.
All right.
The night of the Budget Committee, it would not work.
Right. But Facebook Live worked that night.
That worked. That did. That worked pretty well. Had we known we were using it in advance, it would have been even better.
Yeah.
Do you know how many people would have tried to use YouTube or Facebook versus Zoom?
No. There were some people that, people I talked to, didn't want to have to download the Zoom information. They just wanted to be able to watch. And they were, that night, they were able to call in at least. Because on YouTube Live, you can't participate anyways. So it'd just be watching.
Hi, Jeff.
Good evening.
Hi, Jeff.
Hey, Ken.
I see Ted Wells' face. I think that must be Anna.
I promoted to panel, assuming it is Anna.
Anna, are you out there? Oh, Anna. But Ted, there's still like the screenshot of Ted's face on here.
What?
Is he listening in? Because Neil promoted him.
Oh, that's funny. Um, yeah, he's probably, whoa, I can hear myself downstairs. I'm not liking this.
So Neil, maybe Ted is supposed to be an attendee, not a panelist.
Turn it down, guys, please. So professional.
Oh, Stephen. Hi, Stephen.
All right, Ted has been demoted.
Thank you. It's about time.
Always the loving wife.
I love that he wants to participate, but.
All right. Are we good, Neil?
We are good.
Okay, hi, everybody. I feel like I haven't seen you in so long because I'd gotten used to our weekly Zooms.
Don't get used to it.
All right, I will read the right-to-know meeting checklist. As Chair of the Hopkinen Select Board, due to COVID-19 slash coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board's authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting. Uh-oh, hold on, I lost my script. All right. Um, where is I contemporaneously, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm, we are doing the following. A, providing public access to the meeting by phone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're using Zoom for this meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through Zoom. If the public has access and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing 1-646-558-8656, or by clicking on the following website, zoom.us. Oh, I usually don't read that actual website address. There's a Zoom link there. Uh, okay, B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions are on the town of Hopkinen's website at hopkinennewhamshire.gov and on the town of Hopkinen's Facebook page. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, call 603-746-8242, or email townadmin@hopkinennewhamshire.gov, adjoining the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public's unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn and have it rescheduled. A few other things about the meeting. It's being recorded and will be available to watch at a later time. The link to watch will be on the town website. The Select Board is unmuted. Everyone else is muted. If you have questions during the meeting, you can use the chat feature or raise your hand. And during public forum, we will unmute people to allow them to speak. And every vote will be taken via roll call. So we'll start by taking roll call and let us know where you are and if anyone is in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law. Who, okay, this is Sabrina Dunlap. I am alone in my house. In my office, I should say. All right, Ken.
Ken Traum, I am also alone and also in my house.
And Jeff. You're muted, Jeff.
Jeff Donahue, also alone, also in my house, sorry.
All right, Anna.
Anna Wells, I'm alone in this room, not in the house.
And Stephen.
Stephen Whitley, alone in this room. And I need to add that I'll probably need to step away right around seven, but I'll be able to rejoin maybe half hour later. So just FYI.
All right. Okay. So next we have, where are we? We have Points of Pride.
Letter that we received. And this was actually sent to the Police Department. And it says, Dear Officers, throughout the national horror of world, national, and local outrage over the manner of George Floyd's death, I am moved to send this note. I'm comforted by the thought that our police department has been screened, selected, and trained to be the best, fairest to all people, not responsive to the color of their skin. I want good police officers to be praised and recognized for their impact, a positive effect on our local society. I served on a gut lunch committee years ago when it was, when it just began. The care evidenced by our citizens, for our citizens by Chief Pacora touched me. I hope that when you see the driver wave to a police car, which I always do, you know, it's because I know your job is difficult, often thankless, but you're truly appreciated. Sincerely, Dale Roberts.
Very nice.
That's the one I have tonight.
Anyone else? Points of Pride?
Sure. We had gotten the, the letter from the town band that they're not going to be performing for this year, but I would like to thank them for everything they have done and the enjoyment they've brought to many people in town over the years. The other thing I wanted to mention was that the Historic Society had received, I believe it was a national award relating to the Cemetery Walk on Putney Hill back, it seems like years ago, but it was last fall, and like to recognize Beth Spalding and Lynn Clark specifically for that.
Thank you. I can't remember. At our last meeting, school had not ended. Had it? It ended last week. Right? Am I right, Anna?
Right.
Okay, so I would just say thank you to all the administrators and teachers and parents and everyone who sort of muddled through distance learning and I know, you know, we're very familiar with Harold Martin and Bill Croza especially, I feel like, just did an amazing job staying connected to students and parents and so I think I speak on behalf of many when I say thank you to all of them for their efforts during the last few months.
It's been amazing.
All right, um, moving on to administrative approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Sabrina Dunlap, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, is this when we usually authorize Jeff to go? Jeff, are you willing to sign for another?
Absolutely willing. I haven't seen Neil in two weeks. It's been terrible. So much.
I move, we authorize Jeff to graciously go and sign on our behalf at Town Hall.
Second.
Sabrina's, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Approval of the public meeting minutes of May 26, 2020. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved. Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All right, Sabrina's, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, approval of non-public meeting minutes from May 26, 2020, session one.
So moved.
I got second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just note that they're not sealed.
All right, Sabrina's, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And finally, approval of non-public meeting minutes from May 26, 2020, session two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, they're not sealed.
Okay, Sabrina's, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so 5:30. All right, we have Chief Pacora. Is he with us, Neil?
Not yet. He will be here as soon as his other meeting is over.
Okay, so let's see, the public hearing's at 6:00. Um, okay, well, he had said he had another meeting but would join us as soon as he could. Um, so I guess we can start talking about this and hopefully he can join us because I think it would be really helpful to hear directly from him. But just to put this appointment into context, I had reached out to Chief Pacora last week just to talk about current events and sort of get his perspective as the Chief of Police. And we had a really, a very good conversation and it was helpful to hear from him. And this is with respect to just everything happening right now in the US with, you know, just dealing with racism and sort of the recent death of George Floyd and others. And so anyway, in talking to Chief Pacora, we sort of came up with this idea of making a statement of unity. So it's us with the Chief of Police sort of representing the Police Department. And the idea is to basically just make a statement condemning the recent actions of certain police and making a statement that we, we stand together with all Americans and you know, we stand united against racism in all forms, whether it's embedded or explicit. And I personally think, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, I think, for many of us on an individual basis with respect to racism. And I think there's a lot of work to be done as a community and as a state and as a country. And I feel pretty strongly that, you know, it starts with conversation in the community. And I think that I don't have answers. And these are hard issues and these are really, really difficult and sad times. But my hope was in making this statement that we could at least sort of invite the community to stand with us and to engage in conversation on these really tough issues and and just think about what we could be doing better in our community to be more inclusive and to fight racism in all forms. So that's my intro on it. I don't know if others have thoughts on the, on the statement or just comments sort of on the times.
Two things. One, it looks like Chief Pacora is with us now, so.
Excellent.
I agree, Briny. I mean, I, my family went to the Black Lives Matter demonstration and conquered over the weekend. So I personally support what you described. And I think it's important for the Select Board as an institution and the Hopkinen Police Department as an institution to stand for those things as well. So, yeah, thank you for suggesting that we do that and starting the conversation.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I'd like to start by thanking you, Randy, for starting the initiative on this and, and the Chief for everything that he and the department do year-round.
I would just add, echoing what everybody has said so far, just that you know, this, this is not a unique thing to do right now. There are other police departments in New Hampshire across the country who are issuing statements like this. And it feels like given the context of what's been unfolding over the past couple of weeks, it feels to me like silence is not an option. So I'm just, I'm really, I'm proud of how this statement came together and really hopeful that the rest of the board sees it that way too, and that we can, and the Police Department as well sees it that way too, and that we get this out to show our support for those who are standing up to what's been happening.
Jeff, I don't know. I don't want to cut you off if you want to chat, but I just want to say hi and welcome to Chief Pacora. Thank you for joining us. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see everyone.
I actually wanted to hear from the Chief, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to say, Chief, I just gave a brief introduction as to how this issue came up and just said that we had a very nice conversation last week and both kind of landed in the same place, that doing some sort of statement together felt like the right thing to do. So happy to turn it over to you.
Well, when we first spoke last week and before even you and I had the opportunity to speak, when I first found out about what had happened to George Floyd and saw parts of the video or videos, I was deeply disturbed. It's, this is human life. And it's unconscionable, deeply, deeply disturbing on many levels, morally and professionally. To see that happen, it's something I think that law enforcement throughout the country, certainly throughout New Hampshire, is struggling with. And I think that I feel my heart goes out to Mr. Floyd's family and what they have suffered through.
And Chief, I think you'd mentioned that we'd had some folks in the community and Neil read a very nice letter, but some people reaching out to you saying thank you. And I certainly echo that. And I feel like, you know, we're incredibly lucky to have you as a Chief and you're very approachable. And I've always found the whole department to be that way. And so, so thank you for everything and certainly appreciate you sharing your thoughts on this.
Well, I thank you for that. I thank you for those kind words. It was just surprising. Last week, we had someone drop off two dozen cookies and unrelated to the note of thanks and appreciation. But I know that we always try to perform our duties in serving all of you. And I think that's why the message of unity is so important, is that the police represent the Select Board, the Select Board represent the community as a whole. And so what we're trying, I think, to address here is a message of solidarity. And I know that the officers, as I started to say, they just, it's very important to me and important to them in the work that they do, that they demonstrate a level of ethics and moral character in all the work that they do.
Great. Jeff, I don't know if you want to say anything. You don't have to. I just know everyone else has said a little bit, so.
No, that's fine. You know, I read the letter. I, I think it's a good statement. I don't know, Chief, if you had a chance to read it or what your thoughts are on it, but.
We were looking through.
But not enough to get in a, in a huge discussion over.
I'm sorry, I may have interrupted. I didn't hear the first part.
I said I might quibble with a couple of small points, but nothing to get into a huge discussion about.
I think when I saw the, the draft today, Neil had shared it with me, that we had talked about, there it is, updating some of the redundancies and it looked like he already did. So I'm looking at an updated model right now. Thank you. Just so it read a little bit clearer and hit the point that, that we are united.
And we did take out mentioning Breonna Taylor, just because I think that's like an ongoing, unlike George Floyd, where the officers have been, they've been indicted, arrested, whatever it is. In Breonna Taylor's case, I think it's still open. So we just didn't want to comment on that. But, you know, certainly hold her and her family the same that we do as George Floyd and others who have, who have died. So Neil, is there a way to make this a little bit bigger? Excellent, thank you. So this definitely looks, um, yeah, a little bit shorter. It's probably a good thing. So I'm happy to just read it, especially for anyone who's on the phone and can't see it. And then if others have edits or thoughts or improvements, we can certainly make changes on the fly. Does that sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the statement. As we continue to work together, united, representing the residents of Hopkinen, we would like to send a clear message that we stand against racism. We condemn the recent killing of black Americans, including George Floyd, at the hands of police officers. We extend our sympathies to the friends and families of those whose lives were taken so senselessly. Together, we stand in grief and sorrow against these unconscionable acts of violence, which violated police officers' oaths to serve and protect. Further, we acknowledge and condemn the tragic reality that discrimination against people of color in America is part of deeply rooted systems of oppression. We stand together today to say that as a country, we must do better. This begins in our communities where we must fight racism and bias, explicit and implicit, and work to create and keep communities that are welcoming and just. We all have a role to play in fighting racial injustice every day. To that end, we invite our citizens to engage with us in standing up for justice and in making Hopkinen a welcoming and inclusive community in which to live, work, and visit.
I like it.
An anonymous attendee wrote, okay, I think it should be killings. This person suggested making the word killing plural in the second sentence and a comma after Floyd. I agree with that grammatical change. Thank you, anonymous attendee.
From a style that "S" shouldn't be capitalized in killings, by the way. I think families and friends puts the families first, which I think is appropriate rather than friends and families. And Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it is normally to protect and serve, not to serve and protect.
You are correct.
My dad was in law enforcement for 50 years.
What was that, Jeff?
I said my dad was in law enforcement for 50 years.
Ah, got it, okay.
I get it.
Yes. And then just after oaths to protect and serve, right? Yeah. So it's the first sentence of the second paragraph, Neil. Anyone else have thoughts or comments? So, I don't know, do we need like a motion and a vote to like officially accept this?
Makes sense to have an official vote if you're.
Okay. And then assuming we pass this, I think, you know, Neil, if you want to share it on the town Facebook page or whatever, and we can obviously share it too, then that would be great. So do we have a motion to officially accept this joint statement?
I'll move, we accept the revised joint statement.
Okay.
Okay, any, any more discussion? All right, Sabrina's, yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all. And thank you again, Chief Pacora, for joining us and for your help with this.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
And Neil, could you email out the final version to us?
Sure.
Okay, so our public hearing on the tax relief incentive is not until 6:00, which is four minutes away. So let's see, can we get through? Let's see, do you want to start updates, Neil, or?
Sure, sure. There's actually just a couple general updates before we get into the more probably down the line of the in-depth stuff. Ken already noted it, but the town band will not be playing this summer. They've decided not to do that. And also, we learned this week that the Hopkinen State Fair will not be taking place this year either. Those were the two sort of big things that changed this week and down. Probably not in a short time, the Town Hall reopening and the Kimball Pond and is, actually, we probably have time if you want to do the grant update.
Yeah, let's do it.
So initially, the first portion of the Gopher Grant was due on June 1st. They had initially said, there's the FEMA grant which pays 75% and we would have to pay 25%. Initially, they said that you could not charge the 25% to Gopher. Then that changed and said you could. Initially, they said that you could not charge the 25% to go for, then that changed and said you could. But the Friday, just before it was due, they said it looks very likely that FEMA will be 100%. So you may not want to submit your Gopher stuff in. And at the same time, this was just before noon on Friday, we were about to submit. They also said, and you don't have to submit your grant now for March and April. You can submit it at the July 15 deadline, which would be March, April, May, and June. Given where we were at, that seemed to make a lot of sense to do it that way, because we don't know if we're charging for the 25% or not and all that. So so we will submit for July 15th for the first four months. That, so that's the update there. But if we could, if you could do the motions to accept and authorize me to sign the grants as they go in, that would be great. I think I can pull that up. I can find it.
Neil, do you need the exact wording that you had provided to us or just the general motion to approve those?
It could probably, you're better off with the the exact wording. And there's.
Okay, I will move that the select board under RSA 21, RSA 21 dash P colon 43, except to, except up to 134,00227 CARES Act funds from the state of New Hampshire and authorize said funds to be expended as designated by the CARES Act grant, subject to its terms. Further, that the select board authorized Town Administrator Neil Cass to sign all documents related to this grant on behalf of the town of Hopkinton.
Second.
All right. Everybody good? No discussion?
And Neil, just for the record, it's not a real windfall to the town. We're only can tap this 134,000 to reimburse us for incremental costs we incur due to COVID-19. Is that correct?
That is correct. And there's a set amount which has been allocated. And based on population, towns can apply up to that amount. And this 134,227 is our highest amount, at least at this point, depending on the state still has some funds which may be used for this, but as of now, this is.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second. So roll call, vote Sabrina's yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Okay, Ken, do you want to move the second one to?
The second motion is first responder stipend grant. A move that the select board under RSA, New Hampshire RSA 21 dash P colon 43, except up to $54,500 in first responder stipend grant funds from the state of New Hampshire and authorize said funds to be expended as designated by the first responder stipend grant, subject to its terms. Further, that the select board authorized Town Administrator Neil Cass to sign all documents related to this grant on behalf of the town of Hopkinton.
Again. All right. Any discussion?
I guess a question, Neil, the is there any date that these stipends have to be used for? And would that occur before the 54,000 is used up or vice versa?
They start, let's see, they start June 1st and go for eight weeks. And they are. I'm not sure I understand your questions.
Sure.
Anyone who is available receives the grant. So full-time first responders receive $300 a week. Part-time first responders receive 150 a week. And call firefighters who are not EMS trained receive $50 a week.
I guess I could have asked my question much more clearly. At the end of the eight weeks, will there be money left of the 54,000 or will the town have to pay something out of town funds?
No, nothing that the, if, if this, this 54 covers it, anything we don't expend has to go back and we would submit for anything beyond. So there's no, it's strictly paid through the grant, no town funds involved. I should correct that in that the social security and Medicare associated with this is paid by the town, but that can be submitted through the Gopher Grant. So the town will be reimbursed for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call, vote Sabrina's yes. Ken?
Yes.
Jeff? You're muted, but I see your mouth said yes.
I got a little thing in my throat. I don't want to be coughing on.
All right, Anna?
Yes.
And Stephen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So now we can move on to our six o'clock appointment, the public hearing on the community tax relief incentive related to 56 Maple Street.
I wasn't sure if John was going to come on or not. This is the 79E Community Tax Relief Incentive. Basically, the board can, or qualifying structures for a period of time determined by the board, you can you can basically I've lost the word. There would be no additional tax on the rehabilitation that has taken place. And you can do it up to five years. And under public benefit, it would, you have to determine that there is public benefit under the the criteria. And they did outline their outline for what is public benefit. This is what they have outlined is their public benefit.
So since this is the public hearing, should we open lines if people want to comment? Or ask people to raise their hands?
Is the applicant on, Brini or Neil?
I did not see the applicant on.
Okay.
He was going to.
Does the board want to discuss it first and then open it up? I feel like usually we open it and then talk about it, but.
I would favor hear from the public.
All right. So Neil, should we ask people to?
Raise their hand?
Raise their hand. And I see there's two phone people on here. So I don't know how, if they can somehow indicate they want to, okay, talking permitted.
I want to bring my charge thing into.
So whoever, we've got a 4909786 number, you're permitted to talk, and an 8154 number. If, if one of the people on the phone wants to talk, just say yes, or we can mute you because we can hear you. So 9786, whoever you are. Would you like to speak? Hi. Yep.
I don't, I don't know why my number came up. I'm just listening in, so you can mute me.
All right, thank you. And so then we have 8154. I don't know if you'd like to speak. All right. Person on the phone, would you like to speak?
No, I would not.
All right, thanks. We'll meet you. All right, I see Judy C has a hand up.
And you're muted, Judy.
Be able to unmute yourself.
All right, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So my question is this application for tax relief. Is this a private company that's building this and will benefit from rents going forward of the five units?
Yep.
That's a yes. So do they have to reapply every year or are we giving them a carpet to, you know, a blank check to say we'll give you a tax reduction while you make money on these rents? Or add infinitum?
Part of our, go ahead, Anna.
Sorry, we, the select board gets to decide for what period of time we're providing the tax relief. So it's up to five years essentially. There are a couple other, we can add an additional two years for a project that results in new residential units, up to four for a project that includes affordable housing. So there are other, it's essentially at the discretion of the select board. But it's up to about five years.
Okay, thanks. So then you could be looking at this in terms of whether or not this will be affordable housing. Or do you know that at this point in time or not?
I had asked that question, I think, at our last meeting and was told it is not affordable housing.
Uh huh.
Market.
Okay, if this were to have been a restoration and then sale to a single homeowner as opposed to five separate dwellings at not affordable housing, what would the tax impact be? And would you still be looking at giving a private owner who'd restored a valuable home to the community, the type of tax break as you would to a developer who to create five units that are not affordable?
Any property owner who meets the criteria can apply for tax relief under 790. Whether it's a single family home, a structure, a business, the Neil, maybe do you want to throw up the the, I think, view that we have the 790. And then we can go down to like the public benefit section, maybe. So it's essentially an incentive to rehabilitate historic structures in sort of village or downtown settings.
Okay, let's see. Enhances the viability.
If we're inclined to grant this, we have to find that it meets one of these public benefit criteria.
Only one of them.
Only one.
At least one. Yep.
Okay. I was just trying to wrap my head around tax incentives and breaks. And taxing right now is such a hot button in the community. And I'm sure you're going to do your due diligence and have good good quality conversation about whether or not you're going to grant this and for how long. Seems to me when we're preserving historic landmarks that they really should benefit the public, all of the public. And I'm just questioning whether non-affordable housing benefits the citizens of the town.
Sorry, before you go on, can you just state your name and address, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Judy Case, 1030 Briar Hill Road.
Thank you. Sorry, I dropped.
No worries, no worries. Thanks.
So Judy, I think one of the things that this 79E tries to get at is the, you know, the alternative to rehabbing a structure is to leaving it in its dilapidated state. So that's not benefiting anybody. So improving on a structure is whether it has a single residence in it or five market rate units or five affordable units. One of the benefits to the public is rehabbing otherwise, a structure that would otherwise be underperforming, for lack of a better word.
Sure, sure, I get that. I think I'm just trying to get a sense of if this, if this was an investment and someone bought this place and decided to turn it into a money producing with, you know, frankly, you flip a place, you want to get your money back. But is this a long-term application to get tax breaks, as I said earlier, add infinitum, or is this something that truly says, I'm going to refurbish this, we're going to bring more, more owners, renters, whatever the structure is into the town. And then as it becomes self-sufficient, I will, you know, back away. Or is this, or is this a type of scenario where we're going to be giving tax breaks at an unknown length of term?
Well, it's for a set period of time.
Okay. And is that right? That's correct that the select board determines that select amount of time?
Yes.
Okay.
Within the confines of the legislation, we can select the time period.
Up to five years.
Okay, okay. That's all. And thank you for helping me understand the clarifications here.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any other hands raised?
I do not see any.
Anyone else want to comment during this public hearing? Well, if people suddenly feel the urge, they can also raise their hand as we discuss this as a board. So people's thoughts?
I guess I can start by saying that I feel it is certainly a substantial rehabilitation. It was a a building that's very close to downtown that was certainly in disrepair and dishevel. And it appears as though significant work is being done with significant dollars being spent to upgrade to hopefully something that people in town will drive by and say, you know, a nice looking building that fits in.
Also, I think it's, it is meeting a need in town, which is sort of smaller units, apartments, whether they're going to be rentals or condos, I don't know, but that's definitely a type of housing stock that we do not have a lot of. And it being in the village, you know, provides a type of housing option, which I think is lacking at the moment.
May have raised her hand again. Let's check.
Yes. Yes, I did. So the Davis Building, which is an historical building, as I understand it, is a multiple apartment rentals. Does that receive this similar tax compensation that this particular building is applying for?
Well, I don't think they've applied, and I don't think that they're rehabbing anything. Is that right, Neil?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah. So you have to actually be. So you have to actually be doing rehab and also actually apply, and they have not.
So, so we don't know that they ever applied when they were rehabbing it?
I, no, I don't think they did. Neil's shook his head no.
Was adopted about 10 years ago, and I don't think they've done any major renovations to that particular building in that time.
What's the minimum amount of years that you, you would consider granting for this type of a relief?
Well, if it's up to five years, I think the minimum we could do is one year. Yeah, okay.
And that would give the builder time to recoup their investment.
Well.
You don't have to say yes or no, because you don't know, but I'm just, I guess I'm recommending that we give them, you know, a lower term and not the full five years.
Can you say why you would recommend that?
Yeah, you know, I come from an area where people were buying property and tearing down eight hundred thousand dollar homes and putting up two million dollar homes and, you know, flipping them or putting two two million dollar homes on the property. And because because of relief such as this, you know, not having to pay the full burden of taxes. And, you know, I guess I want to know, or I'm trying to parse my way through, we give a tax relief, what does that do to impact the city in terms of you bring five more families into that area and you increase the burden on the community, the schools, the parks, et cetera. Where do we recoup that kind of an impact? So we, you know, we grow, we bring in new people, but with a tax relief for the investor, they're not contributing towards sidewalks, roads, schools, et cetera. So that, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my initial reaction would be anyone who moved there would be paying taxes and likely contributing in other ways to the community, one would hope, you know, shopping and tookie and that sort of thing. So that's sort of my simple take on that. I don't know if Anna or Steven, I feel like you're more knowledgeable in this area than I am, but.
I would add that, you know, whatever time period, I mean, assuming we feel like this meets the criteria, and then we set a time period. When that time period expires, obviously, they're going to have to pay the full amount of taxes due on the property. So it's only a fairly short term. You know, it's been set up to five years. The other thing I wanted to point out is that it's not a complete tax break. You'll only get the benefit of this on the improvements that you make to the property after the board grants approval. So all the work that's been done so far wouldn't qualify. And just the, the base assessment on the property as it is right now would also not qualify for this. So it's not a, it's not a complete tax break for whatever period of time the board determines. It's a an incremental one, depending on how much work is being done on the property.
Thank you. That, that really helps clarify it. I appreciate that very much and all of your comments.
Thanks, Judy. And that was just for the record, because I don't think she said her name again. That was Judy Case again. And I guess just sort of going off of her comments, I would, I feel, and Anna, you sort of already said this, I think, you know, it might not technically be low income, or sorry, not low income, affordable housing, but it certainly diversifies some of the housing in Hopkinton, and I feel like that is a constant concern that we just, we don't have a lot of diversity in our housing available. And whether it's young families or single people or, or older people who are retired who don't want a big colonial or something, you know, this diversifies the housing in Kentucky, and I see that as a really positive thing.
I would, I would add, Brini, kind of piggyback on that, you know, the, the location of these kind of more diverse units is in an area where conceivably people could walk to access food. You know, the colonial is not far away. So it, it really is kind of a rare a rare accommodation in Hopkinson, because there's not a lot of walkable, truly walkable residential units. Particularly not attached to like a half acre or one acre lot in the town.
So I just want to say that I'm shocked that the developer did not appear for this meeting to explain his project.
Yeah.
And because of that, I would be hesitant to do very much for the developer. I appreciate that he saved the building because I looked at the property, and if the town had let me keep the barn and knock down the house, I would have done so. Because it was a nightmare. God bless him for what he's doing. He's invested a tremendous amount of money in the property. But, you know, to ask for a tax break and not show up to explain, I have a problem with that. And if, you know, if it were my decision, I would say a year or, and, and if the property is sold, if it's condoed, if it's, you know, transferred, then the exemption is lifted. That whoever buys the property has to pay full freight. You know, I mean, Judy's comments about flipping, you know, that's a potential issue, and I just, I don't agree with it. And I certainly don't agree with the developer not answering questions as to whether it's a condo or whether it's apartments. You know, how big they are, how much he's going to charge for rent if his rentals, how much he's selling them for if he's selling them. Those are all relative points that, that he's just not here to answer, and it's disappointing.
Just a question if somebody could answer for me. If we were to give one year of abatement, could he come back in a year or further break?
I don't know.
Don't know, but I don't think so. Just scanning through the thing. I don't think so. I think this is a one time.
You have some options, but I think your options are now.
Yeah.
Neil, not to sound like naive, but did you talk with the developer? Like, did he know this was, this is happening?
Yes.
Okay.
Talked, and then I emailed all the Zoom information on Friday to everyone.
It, it looks like that, you know, if we're inclined to grant this, you know, he's got to put a covenant on the property limiting its use to whatever public benefit we identify. And that covenant and the tax relief that's associated with it would flow to any future owners. So if he flipped it, in other words, I don't, I don't, I don't, doesn't look like we can say that if you flip it, it's going to trigger full taxation. It looks like the state law sets forth that the benefit of the tax relief flows to whoever he sells it to.
So that gets into sort of like if we do grant it, the length of time situation.
Right, right.
Anyone else have, like, I agree with Jeff. It's a little concerning that he's not here for this, but if we're looking at this just on the merits, like, I think I can clearly identify at least one public benefit, if not more.
I think the benefit's clearly there. It increases residential housing in the town center. I mean, it's.
Yeah. So I guess, how are people feeling about up or down on this? And then if we get to a place of wanting to grant it, then talk about length of time.
I'm agreeable to granting it because I do agree with what's been said about the public benefit. I think the devil will be in how long of a period we're willing to go.
Neil, or maybe someone who's lived here longer than I, do we know other properties that have received seventy ninety relief and for what lengths of time and for what types of benefits? And, you know, I know there's not necessarily a formula like there was for the barn preservation easement, but if there's some sort of guidance or guidelines that have been used before, it might be helpful.
This, this is really the first one that's come all the way through the process. So, no, there is no there is no precedent set.
Brini, did you see that, that there's someone asking for the number to join in by phone?
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, thank you.
Could we delay this for a week and tell the developer, you know, give him another opportunity to respond to any questions that we may have?
I'm fine by that. I think we have some time from when the public hearing is held to render a decision. So I don't think we have to.
Okay.
Let me, let me double check that.
Jeff just said forty five days, I think.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that. Yeah, yeah, I think that's right.
So Steven, can I ask you a question? I think I heard you say that it goes from the point of the application forward.
Yeah.
So he doesn't get it for the money that he spent gutting the place, putting in a new foundation for carports. How does that work? Do we have to have it reassessed, revalued?
It was assessed on April first as part of the building permit process, so.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
Look at the permit, Neil. Does it the buildings so the building's worth less than it was a year ago in twenty nineteen? Even though he poured a new foundation? Is that correct?
I can tell you, I can look that up.
There's a question from DC that I'll read. Can I ask how a family that moves into the units, do these families actually pay school taxes? I don't quite understand that, but I would say anyone who's paying taxes in town, they go to everything in town, so schools.
I think it depends on if it's condoized or not.
Ah.
If it's condoized, then you'd be owning real estate in town, and you'd have to pay your share of taxes. If it's apartments, then whoever the owner is would cover that.
I also just noticed that we have Bo Woods now as an attendee.
But, I mean, just to be clear, like, taxes are, I mean, putting aside this grant issue, people who are living there and paying taxes, those taxes are distributed the same way as everybody else.
Yeah, and right. And regardless whether they're an owner or a renter, taxes are included in rent or they're paid by a property owner. I mean, it's so.
Right, and sorry, just, I think DC, I don't know if that's Don C, it says you're giving them a tax break. So that's not, that's not exactly right. So this is about the developer under these strict statutory guidelines. This is not like a tax break for anyone moving into that building in perpetuity, so.
I, I hate to cut this off, but I'd like to actually hear from the moderator when we get there. I don't want to restart this whole discussion at the moment. We can bring it back after we get through the rest of these scheduled appointments, but.
Well, so is, and is Bo Woods with us now?
He should be able to speak. Yeah, can, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, although, sorry, I did not realize that our Bruce appointment was six fifteen. I thought it was six thirty. So we are definitely over. So I agree, I mean, unless we think we can wrap this up in like five minutes, because no, Steven's saying no.
Likely.
All right, so let's.
Well, I mean, with all due respect, my, my quick pledge is, I'm a developer, I'm a builder in town. I've contributed probably more building projects than any other builder in town in tax revenue, and I know our schools desperately need it. We also need development of Kentucky area. And projects like mine will continue forward if I'm able to develop in a way that's taxable. It, it only behooves the town to help a little bit with tax relief on this particular project because I currently have over fifty thousand dollars in just planning, engineering and development, just to get the approval to do the project. And I also have to do another twenty two thousand dollar fire sprinkler system. Which I believe I'm the only person in town with the fires, for some fire in the building. It, it just releases me this tax, really this financial burden to develop a property. And I'm really concerned that, like, I have fun that has known my projects, knows that I finish projects in such an eloquent way. You know, it, it would be kind of a shame that if, if I got taxed out of town and I'm not interested in developing here anymore. So I think as selectmen, you guys have to make the right call. If you want to see more development in this town in a positive, healthy way, you know, you should back your local builders. So that's all I have to say really about it. And I, I know the decision's up to you guys, and to me, it's not a difficult one. I definitely fit under this program.
Can you say your name and address? Can you say your name?
My, my name's John. My name is John Woolen Weber, and I live one oh two Stone Road.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you for your comments, and I think we have given the public plenty of opportunity to speak here. So I think we can close the public hearing and move on, but I guess either way, we're not taking a vote in this very moment because we need to move on to our other appointments. So thank you for joining us. Does anyone have any quick questions before we move on?
I, I do for John, in terms of the five units, is his plan to rent them or sell them as condos? And how many bedrooms would be in each unit? You're muted, John.
You're still muted.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, they're all two bedroom. Back to the school system. And currently, I do plan on condizing. But the current, during this economic times, I'm not I'm selling those condos or so, economic future. But they are all two unit buildings, and it's high end condos. There are high end rentals, however you want to say it. You're welcome.
Just for everybody's information, John had served on the budget committee with me in the past, and on the budget committee, he was a very conscientious member.
All right. Thank you. It looks like he's frozen. All right, so thank you for joining us, and we will close the.
Yeah, I'm not frozen, but
You're breaking up. I don't know if it is for other select board members, but I can't hear you, and you're frozen on my screen. You're breaking up. I don't know if it is for other select board members, but I can't hear you and you're frozen on my screen. Neil, is he frozen to you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that, John. But if you want to follow up with us, feel free. But I think we're going to close this and move on to our next appointment.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I wasn't sure what time I should zoom in. So I apologize about that.
All right. Thanks for joining us. And Neil, it looks like Judy C, it still says talking permitted. So I don't know if she should no longer be on the panelist. All right. So next up, we've got our meeting with Bruce Ellsworth, the town moderator regarding the 2020 town meeting.
We can hear you, Bruce.
You can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Bruce. Before we go on, it looks like Neil Bo Woods is still a panelist too. Hi, Bruce. How are you?
I'm fine.
Hello.
Interesting to hear. We agreed to get together to see if at this point we wanted to hold with the tentative decisions that we made at your last meeting. And so I'm just here, first of all, to ask you whether you're comfortable withholding to that. Oh, my role here is simply to make it easy for you. So I guess I ask all of you, how are you surviving in this? And are you continuing to work under the current budget? And I think that's the critical issue at this point. If the answer is no, then we ought to make sure that we do this in a timely manner, even maybe not earlier than the date we've set. But we at least not ought to extend it. If the answer is yes, then maybe we can continue it on a little bit longer and, and hope that the situation continues to get better. So without passing the buck, I would like to know your situation before we go any further.
Bruce, when you say we're operating under the current budget, I mean, we don't have a budget.
You're right.
If, if we had gotten approval for the budget that we and the budget committee had agreed to, you know, a number of months ago, we'd be in good shape. If we were to compare to last year's budget, we're going to have to do a lot of work, let's say. So in that sense, I'd personally be more comfortable getting to a resolution on what our budget should be for 2020.
Sure. I understand that. If we stick with the July eighteenth, which is what is currently on the docket. But before we get there, you know that, that my preference is to get everybody in the room so that we can all hear what each other says. So one option would be to continue with the July date and set it for the town, for the high school and hold it as a regular meeting. How comfortable are you with that nulling the pulse of the town?
Just speaking for myself, I'm uncomfortable with that. And certainly looking at what occurred in Henneker Saturday, where as it turns out, they had apparently about ninety people in the gym, which I think is considerably lower than their normal attendance in a town.
And I think they're scheduled for their next meeting and they don't know where they're going to have it. And I read the same article you did. They're scheduled to do it on July fifteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. And our school folks are meeting on Saturday, August fifteenth for their voting. So that moves their date ahead and, and we don't want to conflict with that. So I guess then a couple of, one other option would be to move it from July eighteenth to say August first. I don't think we want to have it the week before. That would give us a couple more weeks if you think meeting in the high school has value. If not, then we can make alternate plans.
Again, speaking for myself, I think meeting in person certainly has value, but I just don't know what the level of comfort of townspeople would be to come to a physical meeting.
Okay.
So I'm torn in that sense. What I've been doing and what Neil has been doing and Anna's been providing information and thoughts to me is we'd be working on some, we'll call it budget scenarios. It's something considerably lower than what had been developed, you know, three, four months, six months ago. And Neil and I would be meeting on that later this week with the thought that, you know, we'd be coming before the select board with some discussion points or options in the near future. With the thought that, you know, we, you would want to hold the, the mid-July meeting.
Okay. Want to take a, I don't know how you want to handle it. Shall I move on that or would, or others, the others have comments?
Yeah, I was making it very clear. I was simply speaking for myself. I, you know, everybody else, please, you know, add whatever your thoughts are.
I mean, I'd love for us to be able to have an in-person meeting if it were possible. You know, I'm not convinced it's not possible in July. You know, we're, we're three to four weeks behind Massachusetts. Massachusetts now is under a half percent a day of new cases. We're at one and a half percent a day of new cases. So, you know, it should tail down over the next six weeks. You just don't know if it's going to happen or not. I mean, that was, that was the piece and I, you know, I'm not worried about saying it on the, on the Zoom call because I've said it to Steve Jamlin and I've said it to James Newsom. The piece that was missing from their meetings was the back and forth. It wasn't allowed. And so that, that was the piece, I think, that hurt, in part hurt the meeting and the quality of the discussion. It just wasn't there and it was, you know, I think they did a heck of a job for what, for the hand they were dealt. I'm not saying it didn't, you know, that they did it wrong, but it was the piece that I personally missed from the process.
So. Meeting, so.
Let me ask you a question. If we hold off, what happens if we get to August first, let's say? And things haven't tailed down. If, if we're not six weeks behind Massachusetts, if we're still getting a lot of cases every day, what, what's, what are our options?
Well, I think that the logical option and, and Jim and the school folks have done a tremendous job of preparing us for that and have done a lot of the legwork and a lot of the thought process that leads into the Zoom program. We can, we can follow that, that method and it will work, I'm sure. But I, I, and you've heard me say before, the same as you have, that I, I think the, the give and take and listening to each other and knowing what's going on and knowing that there's nothing going on behind the scenes that could cause suspicion. I think there's value to, to avoiding all that. So.
Looks like we lost, I think Stephen had to jump off. And Anna, do you have?
Well, I was just going to say, is it worth, you know, planning for an in-person meeting, whether we get creative about it and try to do it out of doors or something like that? But we, we put in place a plan for holding this meeting outside on the current date that we have it scheduled for, July eighteenth, which it does feel very close. But, um, but then have a contingency. I mean, I think that's sort of what we are talking about a little bit is that if, if we, if we reach, you know, ten days before our scheduled meeting and we feel uncomfortable because of the, you know, our, our seven-day average of cases is not declined to a place that we think it's, is safe or some other data point that makes us feel uncomfortable, then we can implement Plan B in a quick manner.
I, I have an opinion about having it outside. I, I don't think that's a good idea. I, I think the, the imposition that we place on all the town workers to, to set up outside and all the communications problems, the PA systems and putting all the chairs in place and worrying about the weather. I'm not sure that that's, that, that's worth worrying about. We talked a little bit about having it in, in the Dergan building. I don't think that's a good idea. Somebody suggested to me having it in the bleachers at the Hopkins and Fairgrounds. I think that's not a good idea because you can't ask people to climb the stairs and, you know, walk from, from the parking area all the way over there. So it seems to me that we're, we really have two logical alternatives. One is the Zoom program and one is to hope that we can have it in the high school.
Right. So I guess my, my question was, do we, do we plan for both? I mean, do we plan for having an in-person meeting? Go ahead and, and start, you know, laying the groundwork and setting the stage for that. And then, but also at the same time, be aware that we may have to pivot at a very short, on short notice to go to the Zoom drive-through format.
And I think, I think that's good reasoning. I, I guess on that basis, I would suggest that we hold to the July date and maybe we revisit it on the first of July. That gives us two or three more weeks to, to see how things are going. And at that point, we can still make a decision between the first of July and the eighteenth. We could work up a Zoom program that would still allow you to, allow us to vote by car on the eighteenth. Or if things look a little better and it looks like making, going two more weeks to the first of August, which is my birthday, by the way. To, that, that could be a last alternative. But probably going beyond that is, you know, almost getting into the school season. And I am sensitive to your needing a new budget to work with, so.
It would be helpful, I think, for us to know as staff that it's going to be on July eighteenth. We can be flexible around how that happens. But once we go past that, we're getting to the point of starting the next budget, although we may start that later, given. And things like highway projects and the equipment we need to buy, it, it's getting to the point where it's going to be too late to be able to do that. So.
Okay. So then let's lock on July eighteenth and find some way to get to it.
I think that makes, yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
And maybe I could join you again. When, when's your last meeting in July or in, in June or your first one in July? What, what night would that be convenient to revisit this?
It's like June twenty-ninth.
Okay. May, may I invite myself to that meeting? And we can look at it then and see whether it's, it's Zoom or, or in-house.
Neil, just a clarification question. Are we going back to every Monday? Or is the last meeting in June going to be the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Before Neil answers, let me jump in on that. And where I thought we'd have to go to weekly meetings is because we have to decide if we're going to amend the warrant articles, meaning the budget and the reserve accounts. And I think that's probably going to take a number of meetings, you know? And part of my confusion here is where we're not sure if we're going to go in person or Zoom is, okay. Well, I guess for a question for Bruce, if we're having an in-person meeting, can we still amend the budget warrant article prior to the meeting?
Not prior to the meeting. I think you'd do all your amendments at the meeting, wouldn't you? Which to me is the value of having the open meeting so that everybody can participate, speak to it, vote against it or for it.
If I, if I thought it was, or the board thought it was beneficial to have the budget committee weigh in on a, an amended number, how does that play into that?
They could speak in the meeting. And I think they've done that in the past. I think Janice done that in the past.
But they'd have to have a, a meeting where, in effect, the select board would have to present and suggest that amended budget.
Yeah, that's between the two of you. Like, all I do is.
All the question.
So. To your point, though, I think, I think maybe like, you know, during budget season, we do meet weekly. And so since we're sort of going into a pseudo-budget session again, if others are okay with it, plan on meeting weekly in June. So that would mean Bruce could come back instead of the twenty-second, it would be the twenty-ninth. Or we could have a meeting next week. And if we want to skip the twenty-second and go to the twenty-ninth, we could do that too. But just for giving him clarity on dates. And then I think, Ken, we can figure out the logistics with us revisiting the budget and how we're going to deal with the budget committee. So if everyone's okay with that, sounds like we're locked in on July eighteenth, still sort of wait and see. You know, if we can figure out a way to do it in person or if we're going to have to do it drive-through. And we will have Bruce come back and visit us on the twenty-ninth.
Okay. And if, if something comes up and, and you want to move us ahead or you want to meet, want me to come back and, and report to you again, you know where I am and I'll be here whenever you want me. So. Is that all right?
Yeah, that sounds good. And I think we all appreciate the fact that things are changing still daily and weekly. And we all have to be nimble in this. And so, yeah, if we get to a place where we feel strongly that in-person's just not going to be possible, then, you know, we'll be in touch. If that's before the twenty-ninth.
Yeah. And I think if on the twenty-ninth, we make the decision to go with Zoom, well, I'll be meeting on the thirtieth to get things started to make sure that we can meet the deadline. And Neil, do you have any doubts that we can do, do that? Can I do that?
Because, because we're not going first, there's a model to follow so that we can, we can get things prepped.
Sure.
And have it ready for that night.
Okay. That's fine. And if you want to get at me again, again, you know where I live. So.
Thanks. There's a few comments in the chat. I think just because we were not in a public comment sort of zone there, we will hold on those until we do get to public comment. And we can discuss them further because we do have another appointment with Chief PL. So.
Okay.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you all for your time.
We'll talk to you soon.
Okay.
Hi, thank you.
So Sabrina, just, so I'm clear. The thought was that Neil and I would meet at least once during this week with the thought that we could at least start talking about potential changes to a budget for next Monday night and go from there. And just for people's information, the budget committee is scheduled to meet on Wednesday, July eighth or ninth, whatever the, the Wednesday is. And the anticipation is that I'd at least be updating them on where we stand, if nothing else.
Okay. That sounds good. Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so we now have an appointment with Chief Yale about a fire truck.
Hello.
Hi, sorry we're late. We got behind on a few things.
Oh, that happened. It was interesting to listen to it.
Well, thanks for joining us.
Oh, thanks for having me. Um I guess I'll just start. I I've been in in constant contact with the um manufacturer, the Greenwood Fire Apparatus. About the trucks actually in Maine. Now, we've had, I believe, three delays since we s- um we signed the the intent. And they're getting a little antsy because they're running out of um they're running out of the season where this is something that they would sell this year. He's paying approximately um I believe it's somewhere around $3,300 a month in interest on the truck to leave it in his yard for us. So I basically was trying to see how we could. I got Neil involved. We had a um a Zoom conference with Chris Champagne, the Champagne. He's the actual um Sales Manager for Greenwood Fire Apparatus. Um and we were just trying to brainstorm and come up with some ideas. And one thing that that kind of came out was a lease purchase option, um which I think we spoke about before when we talked about this. Um so we got some real numbers this time. So if you did a six-month lease purchase, it's basically going to cost you $8,700. Um a one year would be 15,000, $15,706. And I was running these numbers today, getting um ready for the meeting. And I just I called Chris back and um I asked him a question about, I said, if we sign the intent to do the lease purchase, would he hold on to that in case we actually do have a town meeting um on the 18th of July? Because if we gave, we sign the the contract tomorrow and he started getting the truck ready for Hopkinton, lettering, um a couple of the things, he's got to install a foam system, he's got to get some of the equipment that um was listed on the truck. You're probably looking at three to four weeks anyways. So he agreed that he would, if if we had the intent on a lease purchase, and we we ended up getting, having a meeting on July 18th, and they voted in the affirmative for that, we could just pay him instead of um doing that. But what that would have ensured him is he has a binding contract that we were going to take the truck. I just, I think the Capital Reserve has worked so well for Hopkinton. I mean, I feel lucky that we have a community that has virtually been doing, you know, there there are many bonds or um articles that would normally be bonded or you know, you'd you'd um go into a a contract such as a lease purchase. A lot of our neighbors I know have done that. But it does cost a significant amount of money. This truck, if you did a three-year lease purchase, which would be something that would be um you know, that would be 183,000 897 bucks some a year for three years, and it would cost you $84,000. I'm just afraid we're good. This is something that we're gonna, we're gonna lose if we don't jump on it. Um, you know, they've been pretty patient with us so far, but and just to um refresh, it's it's a it's around a $75,000 savings um to buy the demo truck is to order the same truck today.
Uh Chief, uh you know, certainly thank you for for all you're doing here, and it's certainly a sticky place we're in. Um I was looking at the uh the balance we currently have in in our reserves for for the fire department and uh I I assume uh we have about 370,000 currently that we could apply against this purchase.
You could apply some of that. The problem is, along with this truck comes some equipment that's not included. There's almost $30,000 in radios. The radios that are in the truck now have been in there since we acquired the grant back in the early 2000s. Um and they're unreliable and unfixable um at this point. And we're trying to, you know, get on track to change the rest of them out. But this would definitely be our frontline engine, and it would be the appropriate time plus the installation cost. If you ended up having to put those back in, you'd it's just something you'd never get back. All the cables um aren't compatible with a new with a new equipment. Um and the portables, th- those are something, you know, and if somebody gets in trouble, those are that's their their line of defense to to get the word out. Um the the hose, I'm I've been losing hose every year at a pretty dramatic rate because the hose that actually was bought on an old on an old truck is before this truck was is actually what's still on it. So we've replaced some of it. And um we're just losing hose at a rapid rate. And so what it boils down to is there's um a significant amount of equipment that um needs to be replaced when we do this. So you wouldn't the $30,000 of radios and you're you're probably looking at $60,000 or so with equipment. I have some uh a lot of it all um bid it out and spec it out at this point, but there's at least all the large stuff.
So taking those into account, uh you you have something 250 to 300,000 uh that you could apply to the uh this fires.
And sure, you could you could do it as a payment, correct?
Now, um I I guess a question for Neil. Can we um enter into uh anything longer than a one-year agreement without town approval? Town meeting.
You can, provided it has the escape clause that um the non-appropriation clause, if it's not appropriated. And then it would be returned, but you would lose what you put in at that point.
I guess if you could explain that a little more, if we said to the uh the company that, okay, we we've got uh 275,000 we can apply today, and we'd like the other uh to borrow the other 300,000 uh consistent uh with town approval. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, well, you can you can do it up to a year, but um you can't go beyond that unless it has uh non-appropriation clause in it, which means if town meeting doesn't approve funds for it the Yeah, basically, they repossess it. You don't make the payment, they're going to take it back.
Hey, Chief, just a quick clarification question. The the truck is 525 and change. Is that with the ads or is is that the ads on top of that?
It was actually um it was 535 and change, and they're giving us 10,000 for a trade-in. So it brings it down to um the 525, 316, and um
And what did what did you say the three-year deal was?
Um the lease purchase um would end up costing you 84,000. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Like, that's just like 26 grand, isn't it?
Yes, 26. I'm sorry, that I my numbers were wrong there. Was it all the 84? That was what I had for the uh the equipment, looking at the wrong.
I was gonna make a wisecrack about not learning my math here in Hopkinton, but I
Yeah, right.
Too soon, Jeff.
My mistake.
But just to clarify, so is the um so then the 525, all the equipment you mentioned is on top of that or that?
The radios and the um loose equipment, right? The 525 is um the truck um they're adding a foam system that we would require. Um they didn't put it in to the bid just because each department has their own brand of foam system that they're comfortable with and use, and it meets their needs. The suction hose, the ladders, um stuff like that, stuff that's really attached to the truck, but um
This this was all part of the capital uh C I P plan.
5 includes it or doesn't include it? I'm still a little confused. And so how much is it extra on top?
We're looking at 30,000 for radios and then, you know, I haven't I haven't quite finished the equipment list. I I'm up to um around $60,000. And that doesn't include some of the fittings and stuff. I've hit all the major major portions of it yet.
So it's like 100 grand on top of?
Yeah, you you're probably looking right around 100 grand, yeah.
Well, that puts us up to six and a quarter, which is the amount we had originally estimated in the uh to go to cost in the cap from the Capital Reserve.
Right.
So then I'm a little confused on where you're saying that we're saving, you know, $60,000.
Because we wouldn't have, if we had the um if we didn't have, the truck without the equipment was go is going to be $75,000 more without buying the loose equipment, the hose, the nozzles.
Well, then we would have been 700.
Yeah, I mean, this just accomplishes a lot of things. I mean, the the fire industry is the has really been no um exception. The the tariffs have been driving a lot of the increases on um on this equipment, all the, you know, everything's built out of steel. They're all custom trucks. I mean, the engines, all the um rear-end components, the transmissions. Last year, they they normally do one price increase a year, and last year, most manufacturers had three to four of them.
So costs are only going up?
They are only going up.
And it's a minor point. Is this, is it, are these lease purchase deals paid monthly, quarterly, semi-annually or annually?
An- annually.
Annual, okay. Would there be a prepayment penalty?
Yes, I believe there would be. I didn't see it in writing, but we did talk about it.
Yeah.
You still got to pay the interest even if you pay it off early. It 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 sort of fits into the whole picture of what we're going to be proposing to the town on uh on the budget and on the reserves. So we're sort of caught between a rock and a hard place and what to do.
This fire truck bounced around the capital improvement for the last few years, too. We were supposed to start saving for it earlier. Just with all the demands, it just they kind of kept pushing it off um to me, but it's been due for replacement and it's it is just really, really time for it to um to be replaced at this point.
So we've got some urgency around replacing this truck and we're looking at a pretty good deal, getting a demo versus buying it not as a demo. But, I mean, so just trying to put this into context, especially for people who may not have been able to join us when we went through the budget process and for our earlier meetings with you, and we're talking about replacing a truck that needs to be replaced like yesterday.
Yeah, it's a frontline truck.
So, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how we move forward with this whoever these people are who have been very patient with us. Um but also trying to think through like what happens if, you know, the vote does not go the way we want it to in terms of the budget and we're left in this place where we don't have the money to pay for this. Um but also trying to think through like practically, at some point, does the truck just like stop working or like it just becomes unsafe?
Um I could tell you a couple of the uh like the windows don't roll down anymore. We can't get replacement parts. The cab manufacturer's been out of business for um a number of years. We've tried um it's got a real corrosion and rust problem going on. The pump just barely passed the pump test last year, and they wanted to stop the um the actual test with like 10 minutes to go. The transmission was to the point where um it was hot enough that it wasn't cooling at a rate enough that they were comfortable with, and we did keep going, and it did just squeak by the pump test, so. Unfortunately, if it doesn't pass that annual pump test, um you really need to take some action at that point. And you're probably talking 25 or $30,000 to get into the pump and and redo that.
Uh Neil, might correct, the governor has not given any advice on the Municipal Association's request on a default budget definition?
Right, and my understanding is that's not going to, that there's not going to be a default budget. There may, there may be a governor's order related to having town meeting, but uh there, I don't think there's going to be a default budget that doesn't have to be voted.
So, sorry about the barking dog in the background. Um I'm just reading a comment here. Um, all right, so Anna, any thoughts?
I mean, uh this does feel like a very sticky place to be in. Um and um I guess the only other sort of um piece of data is that um the quote that we have from them expires on Thursday, I believe. 14 days from May 28th. Um so we really can't postpone this um without the risk of losing the the rate that we've been quoted. So you're welcome for that. I really have nothing. I mean, um yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely a huge um it's obviously a need. Um and it's just, it's a hard time to take on a big purchase like this, but it sounds like um sounds like we just waited too long, you know? And I guess if um I don't know, at some point, I think um easy for me to say, but at some point, I think, you know, we need to bite the bullet.
Well, it starts to worry me. It it seems like it's it's like a clear safety issue. And then if we don't have I don't know how many total trucks we have, but if we have one that just you know, working, yeah, then then we're really I mean, that's not good. So um this feels very much like an urgent need. This isn't some like superfluous thing we're talking about here. It has been something we should have done the last few years, as Chief PL already said. So I'm just trying to think how we can commit. Um I mean, if we if we commit and say that our intent is to buy it and you know, we say that in good faith and we include the um the non-appropriation clause or whatever you called it, Neil, then if we if the budget if the budget does not go the way we think it will, uh, you know, we're out whatever money we've had to put down and probably burned a relationship with whoever these people are. And I would say in that situation, it seems like they would have to hold off on putting like lettering on and that sort of thing. Which is not ideal, but it seems like our options at this point are like, we lose the quote and don't move forward at all. And then we're in a situation where we're trying to buy a new truck because we need to, because it's unsafe and this truck breaks down. And then we're looking at, you know, we just lost out on seventy-five grand by being able to get a demo. Costs are only going up because of the tariff situation. So that does not seem like a good option. I think, I mean, I would be in favor of trying to move forward with some sort of commitment. And, you know, Ken and Neil are starting to look at the budget again this week. We all will be revisiting it. And if we can make this one of our priority items, I mean, it, this just, it doesn't feel like there's a ton of wiggle room because I, I just don't want to be in a situation where we don't move forward with this and in, you know, a couple of months, that truck that we currently have just is done. And then we're either functioning without the full number of trucks that we need. Or we're somehow trying to buy a brand new truck that costs even more money, you know, with, with real urgency even more than now.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Sabrina. I'm wondering if we can get a delay from Thursday to maybe next Tuesday with the thought that if on next Monday, Neil and I can, can hopefully present something that brings the tax increase from seventy-eight, seven percent down to maybe the rate of inflation and includes the fire engine money. Would that, would then, would we be more comfortable saying that the chief, go ahead?
I mean, I think we could then say with more clarity that we have an intent to buy. Jeff, were you gonna say something?
I was just gonna say, given the way that the school district votes went, I don't know that we can be comfortable. Anything will pass. It's just, you know, people are hurting. Ken's been saying it from the first day of the COVID crisis. People are losing their jobs. People are out of money. And they're rebelling. I mean, we saw that clearly with the school district. And it could, you know, be a significant factor for us. Will bonds get passed? Will, will capital expenses get passed or cut? And, you know, it's, it's just a risk. I mean, we're risking our own money.
Yeah, I think in, yeah, it's a point well taken. And I think Ken, in terms of like revisiting the budget, like I guess it'll be helpful if everyone can sort of weigh in. I wish Steven was back. You know, I feel like knowing what I know, although it's a little fuzzy in my head because it was six months ago, but if we could make this a priority, because it feels like a pretty central piece to our fire department functioning properly, it feels like a real safety issue for everyone, not just people in the fire department. You know, if we can do our best to drop from seven percent to the rate of inflation and make this a priority item, is that, that to me feels like the best compromise we can make. And besides that, it feels like the only other option is just to scrap this whole thing right now.
And just a, a budget question, because I don't know the answer. Are lease payments and operating expense, or do they have to be authorized separately?
They actually can be paid out of the capital reserve. So they would go.
Well, we can pay the, we can pay the first one or the first two in capital reserve, but not all of them.
That's, that's correct.
You know, we're, we're fifty percent short on money. So the, the question is, let's say that we sign a lease and we include the lease payment as a part of the fire department's operating budget. I know several people on the, on the Zoom call are grinding their teeth at the moment. Over that, over that question, it would clearly change Jeff's budget. It's, it's a funding approach. We gotta cut it somewhere else to make it happen. We don't have to cut it this year. We have to cut it next year. And so, you know, again, I'm sure I'm gonna get someone messages me about kicking a can down the road, trying to figure out how we can get the equipment we need without killing the tax rate.
And, and, and Jeff, I, I, again, I totally agree with everybody. You know, what I'm trying to think is, okay, by how much do we have to reduce the seven, eight, seven percent in order to be palatable to the, the voters? You know, my, my starting point is reduce it to the rate of inflation, one, one and a half percent. I, 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 I would hope that that would fly. I don't know if it'll fly. But, you know, that's, that to me is a starting point. And even at that, I think we're, we're pushing things down the road certainly, and we're, we're cutting, you know, muscle out from the operating budget.
And Chief Yell, isn't there an issue with, I mean, to Jeff's point about trying to delay this, like you said, there's issues with even trying to get replacement pieces for this truck because it's so old and there are certain parts that like you can't even, I mean, I guess I'm trying to get at how hard is it to try to muddle through with this truck and trying to replace bits and pieces rather than replacing the whole machine?
Well, like the engine and the pump and the rear ends and stuff, they're components. The manufacturers are still in, in business. The cab manufacturer is out of business and so is the body manufacturer. And the truck is a nineteen ninety-six, so.
So if there's, if there's a major issue with the cab or body, not to ask a dense question, but if the manufacturers are no longer in existence, I mean, what, what do you do if you get like a custom?
You have to have something fabricated or done at a machine shop or something like that, extremely, extremely expensive. Not, obviously they can't like pull them off of the shelf. It would really depend on that the turnaround would be what, what component it actually was. On how long it could actually be manufactured. There's no prints, you know, it would be something, somebody would have to design and, and, and build and fabricate at that point, so.
So it's not, it sounds like it's not straightforward and it's probably ultimately costs, it costs more money to try to like patch this thing together.
Yeah, it really does. That's why we've left some of the things unfixed. Just they're unfeasible with the amount of budgeted money we have for maintenance to do on all the fire trucks, nine thousand dollars that to try to fix something that potentially we're getting rid of. To get a window to roll down and that, to the tune of around three thousand dollars, just doesn't seem sensible to me.
And, and if it was a problem chief with the cab or the body, it would be offline for an extended period of time trying to get that done, correct?
It definitely could be, yeah.
So in the interest of trying to move on with some sort of plan here, how do people feel about asking if they would extend to next week so that Ken and Neil can take a first crack at revisiting the budget? And we then on Monday could officially take a vote on this. I guess if they say no, then I don't know where that leaves us. I, I am inclined to commit to the intent to buy this thing. I just think that, you know, at some point, something's gonna have to give and I, I don't feel great about an old truck that is unsafe and costing money and potentially not going to be able to function. I think that we then have to find other places to, to squeeze and it, it's not easy. And we already went through that with our budget one time last fall, but we're just gonna have to. And to me, this feels like a very important priority. So I don't know how others feel about that, but I would, I would propose that we ask them if they'll extend to next week, vote officially on Monday, and we could do whatever they want, like if it's a letter of intent or if they have some other contract and we include the non-appropriation clause, but I just, I feel like this is pretty important for us to move on.
I did discuss this with Chris this afternoon. And to do something to that effect, he's looking for us to make at least an interest payment of the tune, I believe it was around thirty-three hundred dollars, which would be non-refundable. Which is some, I, I really don't like venturing taxpayer money that we potentially couldn't get anything out of.
I mean, this is like, you know, that does not seem unreasonable to me. This is, we're talking about purchasing a major, important piece of equipment. Like I, I get that. Like I would think it was odd if they didn't expect us to put something down.
I'd certainly ask them for a month if we're paying a month's interest for them.
Oh, and that was for the July eighteenth date to hold it, you know, the potential town meeting. And the only couple of things that I've been following, obviously, the, the town meeting, because I'm very anxious to have one. I'd love to have an operating budget. At the same time, I think that, you know, the Hennecker meeting this past weekend was a good example. They had ninety-two or right in that area, numbers of people come to, to their town meeting and they put off all their articles with the exception of operating budgets. So we could be ninety-two people, I wouldn't consider that really a quorum for the town of Hopkend to have a, a good feel of the taxpayers' feelings on, on anything really.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a whole another issue we've got to figure out. But I think certainly if we felt like we could not hold an in-person meeting, you know, in July safely getting more than ninety-two people, then we would switch over to the Plan B, which is some sort of remote drive-through voting. But how do others feel about this plan of asking them if they'll give us another, I guess, week? So instead of Thursday, it would be Tuesday. And then we'll vote on this on Monday.
I think it's worth asking.
I, 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 I agree among a lot of unfortunate options, probably the best.
And if they say no?
Emergency meeting?
That sounds fair. Okay, so Jeff, are you okay with that plan?
Yeah, I, I can, I can call the Christian plane champagne right, right now and get back to you if you want tonight, so you'd know.
Okay, and Jeff D, you're, you're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
All right. All right. Well, thanks, Chief Yell, and thanks for working through this with us. I know it's frustrating and not easy. So, yeah, if you can let us know as soon as you hear, that would be great.
Okay, I'll, how about if I text Neil? I'll, I'll call him right now and I'll, I'll text Neil and let him know.
All right, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you, chief. Yes, thanks, chief.
Okay, so we are done with our appointments. Moving on to COVID nineteen, um.
Dan is on. I'm wondering if we could jump down to review of pending highway projects. Basically, I think what we're looking for is authority to move ahead with these particular projects.
That sounds good.
They come in and let me. So here they are, I think, as he's coming up. This would, this would do Kearsarge, Culvert, finish Stickney Hill, the paving of the George Park driveway. All of this was in the paving plan and upper stage coach. It's Dan, come on.
Hello?
Hi, Dan.
Hi. So, so it's, hi, everybody. So this is actually lower stage coach on there, which is a little bit cheaper. I have one paving quote as of now. That was from GMI. I'm waiting for one more. The third person I contacted hasn't contacted me over in a week and I'm, I'm done pursuing people to give them work or potential work. So if they don't come to me, then I feel I've done my part. This is, this is getting a little ridiculous with all these vendors who won't call you back and when you're trying to give them money, so. Neil, what Neil didn't put in there is we still have sixteen thousand left over from the original road bond that would go to help pay for some of this.
So, so the total, and it looks, sounds like it's going down because it's lower stage coach. Do you, do you have an estimate, Dan, of how much that is?
Uh, just a rough estimate, we're around two hundred thousand. And the, the paving line last year was three hundred and seventy. And it was scheduled to go up another five percent this year to get in line with where we need to be.
So three, thirty would have been this year and three fifty-two eight. So this would, this is not the full amount. It seems to be within the sort of ongoing expenditure thing within, within the budget.
Correct.
The hope is we could move forward with these projects.
And I really hate saying this, but if that's all the paving we did this year, so the fire department can get their fire truck. I also have a loader that's been ordered and it's, it's in. But I told them I cannot purchase it at this point. I'm with Jeff. We put off, the last one ten we put off last year, we put off for another year so we could get the ten-wheeler. And on the way to turn it in, it caught fire. So when, when I say it's time to get rid of equipment, it's time to get rid of equipment. You keep them longer and the maintenance, it could be not much maintenance. You could end up spending forty, fifty thousand dollars or more to keep this stuff going.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Neil. It looks like Steven's on our attendee list.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And actually, we replaced the fire chief's vehicle last year and that didn't make it to the garage either and had to be towed. We, we run them as much as we possibly can. Maybe not, maybe a little too.
Sounds like a little longer than that.
Dan, a little bit off topic, bond for the culverts. If you didn't, let, let's say we did get approval in mid-July, would there be time to do any work on the culverts this year?
That's what I don't know. Normally by now, we've already, we already have everything lined up, ready to go. I don't know if that's why I'm having difficulty getting prices from the pavers. They might be all full up. And they don't really care if they do some paving with us. I did get a phone call from Weaver Brothers today. They're not sure when they could get here, but if you guys gave the okay today or tonight, they have an opening next week. They got shut down from the job they're doing in Peterborough. And as long as the permit was ready, they could get that culvert done sooner rather than later. Just to remind everyone, this, this culvert on Kearsar Jav has one-inch metal plates over the top of it, and that was to get us through the winter. The bottom is completely gone in this pipe.
So Dan, in terms of the, the, the two-point-two million dollar bond that we were originally seeking, do you have a suggestion on if that should be changed and by how much?
You, you, the two-point-two you're going for now, of course, I was for it, but I was also against it. I'd rather put it in one articles every year, but you said it was gonna raise the tax rate up too much for this year. My advice is take the bond out. It, there's, there's too much uncertainty at this point. Our roads are gonna suffer, but we'll do what we can do to keep them up, up to stuff to drive on at least.
Okay, so, so you're suggesting we, Okay, so, so you're suggesting we table the bond request?
That's my opinion. There's, there's way too much, there's too much uncertainty at this, this point in time.
And Dan, does that uncertainty, is it basically that you, we just don't know if we can get the work done?
No, it's, it's certainly, are we going to have the tax revenue coming in to support another increase?
Okay.
The, the, if we were to bond it, it wouldn't hit the tax rate until next year. You're aware of that, I assume?
No, but thank you.
Does that change your answer at all, Dan?
I'm, I'm still very leery about the, the bond itself. Like I've stated before, I have sixteen thousand dollars left of the original bond. I still have around eight thou, eight million dollars worth of work to do. So we, we, we spend this bond and, okay, we're down to six for six million dollars worth of work to do for a few years, but we can't do anymore because we're making a bond payment. And we, we just get right back behind again.
But Dan, can I ask, I know this is kind of putting you on the spot, but of the one, two, three, four, of the six things that we thought we'd use the bond for, so the Kearsarge Jav, Briar Hill two and three, Boundary one and two, and Tyler Bridge, would you be able to rank those in order of importance or priority or when you think, like, you know, which one needs to be done first?
Kearsarge Jav is, is number one right now.
Okay. And then we had it listed as four thirty. It's now down to one forty-five.
Yes, we, yes, we, we were able to put a concrete culvert in instead of the box culvert.
Okay.
As, as long as the, the permit goes through, I, I talked to the engineers today and there was some question, but they couldn't get ahold of D E S today. But I'm, I'm assuming it's not to change it back to a box, I'm hoping.
Let's just go with that.
Yeah. Number two on the list would be Briar Hill, number two.
Okay.
And then it's a toss-up between Tyler Bridge and Briar number three.
Okay. So Briar Hill number two was about three ninety. Tyler Bridge is over five. And Briar Hill three is another three ninety.
Yeah, these are all estimations. Haven't got any prices yet.
Though Briar Hill two is the one that was ready to go, right? That went to Stickney?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a pretty, that's a pretty reliable number then, because that's sort of was done.
Yep.
Okay. The engineer, so I guess we just have to weigh the, the notion of, you know, are we able to fund a, you know, if we decide not to go with the bond, are we able to fund a three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar project?
Every year.
By tax appropriation alone? And this year I'd say no. And I I'm guessing that things are not going to improve to a place where we'd be able to do that for next year either. So to me, the bond is spreading things out to a manageable amount each year.
And I, I, I get where you're all coming from with that. It's just, I'm very, I don't like making a payment on something and I still have issues. That's where I'm at.
Yeah. Well, I feel like that, I don't, I don't have enough of an understanding of the previous bond and the previous work and how it was used and all of that to make any sort of educated statement about that. I wasn't here for it, but.
Well, the previous bond pretty much rebuilt Pentecost Road by the cemetery. It did Briar number one, Briar number four, and Rollins Road. And help with Stickney as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay, I, when, when I asked Dan, I, I wasn't looking for resolution on whether or not to go with the bond or how much of a bond to go with right now. I, I was just getting some background information. I don't know if next Monday, you know, Neil and I will be at the point where we can suggest what to do with the bond or not. But either way, it does not impact the, the tax rate for this year. And if Dan is also saying that even if the bond was passed, we couldn't do anything with it until next year anyway, you know, that alone might be reason to say, well, let's wait till next town meeting.
Yeah, you, you might as well take this year right out of the, the equations of doing any more work other than Kearsarge. Kearsarge is ready to go. We possibly could do Briar number two if the, the bond were to pass. If Mitchy Corp. had the box that we used from Stickney all rebuilt and ready to go. I have not called and asked them if that's the case. But I had them, I ordered it back when we used it for Stickney. So I would have it ready to go if need be.
How dire is the Briar Hill number two situation? I mean, are we verging on a Stickney Hill situation?
I, I don't think, no, actually, we, we wouldn't be in that situation. That's going to be a total my judgment call because that is not a bridge. That is a culvert. So the state, the state does not look at those.
Okay.
I think we're a little bit away from Kearsarge, which would be the same thing as Stickney. That, that's what Kearsarge is right now.
Okay.
I think we might be a year or two out with Briar number two on that.
Okay. Well, that, that helps a lot. That helps my thinking a lot about the bond.
Yeah, and that's just a guess.
Right, it's all, right, it all is. We could.
Yeah, I would have to have an engineer.
A flood event and all of it could go, right? So.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Now, getting back to the, the screen in front of us, the, what you're asking for authority to do right now is to do the projects, well, the four projects listed with the change pitch coach. And you're seeing even under last year's level of funding for shimming and paving, you have.
We're, we're still well on.
Yeah, okay. I, I personally don't see any reason you should not proceed with that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I'm less familiar with Stage Coach, but.
So, yeah, so old Stage Coach, we rebuilt the intersection down near Briar Hill.
Yeah.
And we actually tore up someone's driveway to reshape the, the road. So, so we could get rid of the dangerous Y intersection and put more of a traditional T in, so people would have to stop and actually slow down. So the, the guy's driveway is torn up, basically. So we need to pave the end of the road. The upper end, we ripped around three hundred feet out because the pavement was so bad. And we changed it back to gravel until we could have the money to redo it. So that's why that's not part of this. It can stay dirt for another year if need be.
Yeah, okay.
Same with Irish Hill. Irish Hill was on my list to do this year. It, it's been actually fine dirt for now. But people are.
Yeah, I'm with Ken. I mean, I, it seems like these need to be done and I don't see a reason not to move forward right now.
The police station is also scheduled to get done. That money's already been in there and set aside. So that's moving forward. And if you guys regret, I'll just add the other things to it.
Others, Ken and I shared our opinion.
I think that all sounds reasonable to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, it's fun.
Ken. All right. Dan, do you have what you need from us?
I do. I'm going to stay with you in case you have any questions about the opening up the fields.
Okay. Um, so that, sorry. So where are we on the agenda here? We were going to go to COVID-19 updates. Would you all be okay if we took like a two-minute break? I have to go grab my computer charger and fill up my water. Everyone good with that?
I have to leave just before eight, just so you know, so.
Okay, well, I'll run really quickly.
Just while we're taking a break, I wanted to let people know that I'm going to bail out soon.
All right. I will be.
You, you gone for the duration then?
Yes, sorry. Yes.
Okay.
What did I miss?
We're taking a break. Steven, we're, we're taking like a two-minute break.
Okay.
Neil, are you there?
Yes, I am.
In case Jeff hears that the Fire Engine Company won't move off of the Thursday cutoff.
They will.
Available Tuesday or Wednesday?
They will move off.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Oh, great. So we have till next, till Tuesday?
They're fine with waiting till after the Monday night meeting.
Oh, great, okay.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Um, I know Jeff's not back yet, but just looking back at the agenda before we get to COVID. So on the conversation about the community tax relief incentive. Oh, you're back. Good. So do people, I know someone mentioned waiting to, like, vote until next Monday because we had questions that were not answered, but do people want to go back to our discussion on that? Or table that till next Monday?
I was the one who suggested maybe tabling it to give the developer, John, some time to respond, but I think he, he basically answered the questions about the number of units and what he plans to do with them in the bedrooms. So I, I guess I'm ready for our discussion. I don't know, whereas we have to delay it.
Yeah. So before we move on to COVID-19 updates, let's go back to the board discussion on that. So I think he meets the criteria and I understand sort of the public policy reasons behind this sort of statute, I guess, and encouraging people to do the things he's doing, which is preserve and rehab historic building and it contributes to downtown Kentucky. And, you know, it seems pretty reasonable to me. It's not like a total tax break. I forget what Steven said. I wrote it down. But, you know, it's, it's not like a a crazy tax break or credit by any means. It's.
They'll still pay taxes on what it's assessed at as of now.
Right.
So it's just the incremental improvement that he gets really from for a period of one to five years. So that he can put some more of that money into the rehab is the thinking, basically.
Right. So Jeff, you're, you're muted.
Sorry. Keeps me from getting caught saying things I shouldn't, I guess.
You're going to do over.
The plan is to sell them as condos. Makes me less inclined because the developer's not getting that. He's passing the benefit on to the people who buy the house who had nothing to do with it. So from that perspective, I mean, he clearly qualifies. I don't dispute that at all. You know, the amount, I guess, is up to us or the length of time, not the amount. You know, the I'm surprised that it's assessed as low as it is today. Because there's clearly been more money invested in it than is reflected in that assessment. So we're giving some additional relief based on that assessment.
And I think, just to be clear, he, he said he wasn't, it was a little hard to hear because he was breaking up, but I thought he said he wasn't sure that selling them as condos is one option, but he was not a hundred percent sure, sure of that.
Yeah, I, I, I thought he said his original idea was to sell him his condos, but because of, let's call it this market, he's not necessarily leaning that way. Could, could we hypothetically say, okay, we'll give him a three-year tax break? But if the units are sold as condos, the tax break disappears?
Well, Steven said that's not allowable. Steven looked it up and said it passes through the new buyers.
Yeah, I just walked into that, but I think that's correct, that I don't think we can condition it on him maintaining ownership for a period of years. And if he does, then it reverts to full taxation.
Okay.
And I can tell you, the real estate market is screaming. People have been stuck inside, not able to look at homes. I took a young couple to look at a house last week. It was showed for one weekend. They got sixteen offers.
Yeah. Are we, Steven, did you just look at this? I mean, it seems odd to me that this would flow to new owners.
Yeah, I'll give you the site. One second, I'm looking for it. Sorry, give me a second.
No, I found it. I'm on it.
Well, then point me back in the right direction.
Oh, I'm just on the Gen Court. website. 79E.
Yeah.
Um.
Gets us part of the way there. Oh, here it is. Okay. Let's see.
It does seem like since it is a covenant on the property, that it wouldn't dissolve when the property changes hands, but.
Now I'm less sure. I'm reading it again and it says, I'm reading 79 dash E colon eight. Roman four. Provide the, we will provide for the recording of a covenant to protect the benefit. The covenant shall be a burden upon the property and shall bind all transferees and assignees of such property. But that refers to the covenant, not the tax relief. And make sure I wasn't reading it from someplace else.
So it says the covenant, under that section, covenant shall be coextensive with the tax relief period. The covenant may, if required by the governing body, be effective for a period of time up to twice the duration of the tax relief period.
I mean, this might be a question to ask New Hampshire Municipal Association. Or maybe there's even some regs that DRA has adopted that we just haven't looked at that answers that question. And again, we're not under any obligation to decide tonight. So maybe it's worth taking some time and just making sure we think this through before we
Yeah, because that does seem relevant to the length of time we decide on.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I would like to figure that out. So unless anyone has like a burning desire to get this done tonight, I think since we're meeting next Monday, we could hopefully get some clarity. And then vote on Monday.
I, I think that makes sense where it's an open question.
All right, everybody good with that?
Yeah. Sorry, I misrepresented that a little bit.
No, I don't think you did. I was just scanning it. I mean, the way these things are drafted, it's like it takes a little time to get clarity.
Hard to read a statue and answer at the same time.
All right. So we're gonna revisit that next week and hopefully get some clarity. So I think that brings us to, I lost my agenda.
Jump off.
Thanks, Jeff.
Have a good day.
Have a good night.
And next week.
Um, that brings us, I think, to COVID. Where are we? Okay, yes, done with appointments. COVID-19 general updates.
Actually, we did those, so I town hall reopening. So you have before you plan and policy to reopen the town hall. Happy to go through it or just answer questions. It's largely based on Londonderry. Which is what I have based it on. And then actually I did the NHMA and the Primex workshop on reopening and they actually were using the same London Dairy, yeah, London Dairy plan, so.
And Neil, we have all of the Plexiglas that we need for separation.
We do.
And masks.
We do.
Yeah. I, I thought it looked to me like, you know, everybody involved, you know, you did a great job on trying to think this through. Was it a, a team effort, let's say?
Uh, everybody received this a week ago Friday, so that everybody who works here has had this, so.
Neil, do you mind just putting it up? Sorry to interrupt for the benefit of anyone who is actually still on and watching.
Or it's, um, what? Four pages, so.
Yeah, maybe we could just, we don't need to go through like every single line, but just to be on the same page to walk through it.
Here we go. Yeah, so this proposes opening June 15th, having staff working in the building and not at home any, beginning on the 11th. So this would allow public walk-ins for the court collector's office and encourage all other people who need to see other departments to do that by appointment. Basically, looking at having hand sanitizer stations, the Plexiglas guards, the six-foot demarcations to, so people know where to wait. And in general, people would come in up the ramp and in that way, they would, if they're going to the planning department, they would not even come in there. They would use the door directly into the planning department. Otherwise, they'd come up the ramp, they'd separate assessing would go straight and we'd have a area marked for people to come around and wait to be waited on for the town court tax collector area. And then as people finish, they would go out the front door. So there's one-way traffic all the way through with people separated. This does call for requiring people to use hand sanitizer and to wear masks when they come in the building. It also outlines staff assuring that they are healthy when they come to work and not, not coming if they're sick. And how it goes through good hand hygiene.
Neil, is there, I'm just thinking through, like, you know, people coming in without a mask, would like Robin be tasked with, with like, I guess, like, how do we enforce that?
No, I think I'm tasked with.
Okay. Okay. Um.
And, and we still would encourage people, the Dropbox is still there. The Dropbox is being heavily used. People can use that. People can use the online services, all of that. So if they don't have to come in, we still encourage them not to. But this will allow people to come in to get those things done that they really need to.
Yeah. Do you guys have, like Clorox wipes or other cleaning things to wipe down all the handles and stuff?
We, we do. And we just got more. We have at each, each place where customers would come, we will have large quantities of those. Going, going thing. The building, the carpets were done because they're done yearly on Saturday. There was a deep cleaning done at the building on Sunday night. And we've doubled the, the number of times they come in to clean the building. The most of the one restroom and, and most of the large room is designated just for staff. And, but staff won't go into others. Everybody will have their own space and not, not be going into other offices and limiting as much as they can any contact there, too.
Okay. Will the, the flow of foot traffic, like if you try to get in the front door, I assume you could, but we'll just have like sign-ups directing people?
That's, that's right. We have A-frame signs that will go right at the end of the walkway. So you have to walk past it with arrows and then A-frame signs at both the, the entrance and where the planning separates.
Okay.
And judging from other towns, some towns have, have implemented a plan like this in our open, some are doing it in July. The 15th seems to be around the time when towns seem to be sort of opening more to the public.
That's when the stay-at-home order ends, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, oh, and what about, sorry if I missed this in here, hours, are they gonna be back to?
That, they would be regular hours.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
I think this looks like a very well-thought-out plan. What kind of feedback have you gotten, Neil, from the town hall staff?
It's all been very, very few questions. It's all been, somebody said, wanted to make sure one of the bathrooms was staff-only. The clerk's office, Carol's, I think, I don't know if she's glad, but she thinks it's the right time to open and I think it will make their job be actually easier being able to, to have some interaction with people now, so.
All right.
It would be great if you could vote on this and adopt it. That way it makes it easier for us to enforce it.
Yes.
The rules.
So, does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll, I'll move. We adopt the, the plan for a town hall reopening, recognizing that it may be fluid in case there are reasons for changes in the future.
I'll second that.
I guess my, my only question is to your point, Sabrina, earlier, your question about like Clorox wipes and things. I'm looking through, I'm wondering if you want to add something about like wiping down high-touch surfaces, like doorknobs and things at a certain interval of time? I don't know if that's possible for you guys to do.
Yes, I think as, as one of the reasons people come back, so we can go through and kind of talk about this in the same building and, and set up intervals for that. So I think that's the intent that, I think it's broader here, but we would make it more more concrete about areas being wiped down really largely between customers.
That was one of the things that where I had been working, that was one of the things she instituted is like a every hour or every two, I forget, but a certain interval of time, you would wipe down the basically it's the doorknobs.
And we've eliminated the public computer and any, any place that people don't have to touch something, they won't. They won't.
Okay, so I don't know if you actually have to amend it or if we can vote on that motion.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay. So, so roll call vote, Sabrina's yes, Ken?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So that brings us to Kimball Pond and other recreation items.
Sure, so Paula met with the life, the head lifeguards as well as the two, the police and fire chief and went through and created these general guidelines for opening Kimball Pond. They match the state's inland beach recommendations. So they're here. And if you have questions, I probably can answer some of them. And maybe it's worth taking some of the areas separate because it does go on about there's opening Kimball Pond, then there's also the proposal to, to have kayaks used at Kimball Lake. And other things are largely part of these two, like tennis, skate park playgrounds and field requests.
Those are part of what, Neil? What did you say?
The phase, phase two of the governor's plan is they open up, which is all group and with sharing equipment and, and
Neil, with regards to the pond, would the cost of the gate attendance be covered by the grants?
Yes, it would.
And I believe Paula said two porta-potties there?
Uh, yes.
Is that, was that normally that there were two?
Yes. And the inland, inland guidelines recommend that, but if you have people there for a couple of hours, you really have to have them there. We will sign them, sort of stating that they're not cleaned every single time. Somebody uses them with some warnings there, some standard warnings.
Kimball all looks reasonable to me. Does anyone have concerns with the Kimball cabins? Let's see, hire a lifeguard and camp staff to rent cacks and canoes. Anyone have issues with that?
This would be something new that we haven't done in the past. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Oh, is there a demand for those canoes and kayaks, you know, that would warrant, in effect, hiring two positions?
Well, these would be very part-time positions. It would not be that often. And people do ask for them. Camp staff has largely the camps have used them in the summer. So this year they're not getting used.
Could it be something by appointment, let's say I, 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 I call up the rec office and say, well, I want to use a kayak tomorrow. And so then somebody could show up there tomorrow to give me the kayak?
You're probably, it's easier with set hours that you can come from 10 to 2 on Monday, Wednesday and Friday or something. I, I don't, I can get more clarification on that because I don't know exactly what the plan is for hours.
Okay, because I don't think it said anything about it was limited hours. And that's what raised the questions for me about the demand and all. If, if, you know, if it's certainly just for specific limited hours, when the expectation is that be the most demand, I think then it makes a lot more sense.
I think the question of a signup is a good question. I wonder if maybe you could toss that to Paula and see what her reaction is to that, whether it's sort of an online thing or, I mean, I'm just thinking of like golf, you have to sign up for a tee time. You can't just show up and play. So I'm thinking about like, maybe it makes sense to, to do something, whether it's calling ahead or an online signup even for that. And then, you know, that also helps to gauge what they what the demand is.
And we do have
I got flowers.
We do have the capability to do online sign-ups, so.
Right, they do it for swim lessons and things.
And they had looked at the possibility of even doing that for people to use Kimball Pond, but that just didn't become very feasible. But they, but they did look at that opportunity.
I wonder if that's a possibility for the tennis courts. To sort of limit like, like people waiting around. I don't know. I mean, it goes to a totally different sort of model than our little fun, friendly, small town has been using forever, but I don't know. It, it could, you know, you could go online and check, is someone using the tennis court? Yes, don't bother going down, you know, I don't know, like, I don't know, just a thought.
On the, the Kimball Lake or Kimball cabins, is one lifeguard enough? On the, the Kimball Lake or Kimball cabins, is one lifeguard enough? I mean, that's a big body of water with lots of, you know, bad sight lines depending on where you are.
Well, I'm assuming all of the users of the equipment would sign waivers and, you know, it'd be like renting a canoe to go out on the river, right? So, they would sign waivers and you would, they wouldn't necessarily be under the watch of the lifeguard at all times. I don't know.
I can get clarification on that, how they, sort of how that's envisioned.
If, if we were going with the waivers, which I think makes sense, do we even need a lifeguard?
Yeah, that complicates things, right? Sign a waiver, but yet we have a lifeguard, so. I mean, could it be more like a, just a straight equipment rental? I don't know.
We could look at that too.
It's a nice idea. You know, to add that element of recreation to the offerings this summer.
I think it'd be great if we can make it work.
Really trying to add some recre-
Yeah.
Seeing that the slasher center is closed and camp's not happening.
Right.
So, talking about tennis skate park and playground, um, do we know, like it says skate park users with social distancing, is that just like, we would recommend that and hope that, I mean, people are already in there not socially distanced and there's signs up saying, don't come in here and they're, so like, I don't know exactly what that means. Uh, and then open the playground, but only if we are prepared to sanitize it. Do we know what that would look like? Or like who would?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that's possible.
Yeah.
Surfaces on a playground that need to be sanitized, that's just, that's going to be such a time suck.
Yeah.
You'd have to have someone there all the time. Yeah, I'm not sure that's going to make much sense.
Like the tennis, I like Anna's point about having an online kind of signup period for tennis. That seems very feasible. But the playgrounds, that's just seems unworkable.
Unless it was managed, I mean, you would have to have an attendant, like if it was managed in a way like you're going to limit the number of people at Kimball Pond, limit the number of people at the playground, but again, you would need like an attendant there, which is like, I don't know.
Well, except if we're getting into these phased openings, I mean, at what point do we say people assume the risk to go to the playground and if they can't, you know, it's up to them to like wash their kids' hands and sanitize as they see fit. I feel like especially with people being stuck or being home more than they might normally be in the summer, people are just going to go to the playground and.
Right, whether replay it's open or not.
Which doesn't mean we should, we should open it, but I think if we're opening the skate park and the tennis courts, because we, we kind of like, I mean, they all closed together. Um, I understand a phased opening, but I do think we're going to get to a point where at some point we have to let people like decide. I mean, I think all of this is also subject to change because New Hampshire's numbers are not going the way we want them to, and yet here we are opening things throughout the state. And so I think, you know, if we see, like obviously if the state shuts down again, or if there's other orders issued, we'll have to follow them, but we could also revisit things if, you know, things start to really go south again.
I guess I see like a, a difference between the playgrounds and the tennis and the skate park. Like you can play tennis and go to the skate park and pretty much avoid contacting other surfaces that other people touch. But a playground, you just can't do that. You know, one, one person, unknowing person who's got the virus and goes to the playground can touch a lot of surfaces and then that's just, it's just something to weigh. You know, I, I guess I, I see the playground as, as one of the last kind of phased openings that maybe we would consider. Just because of how difficult it is to keep the population safe if somebody that's been exposed to the virus then visits the playground.
I think that's particularly poignant considering that it's children using the equipment and children can be carrying COVID and not know, and they don't wash their hands, I'm just saying, because I know, because I have to, they don't wash their hands as frequently. They put their hands in their mouths more than adults do. They put their mouths on things. So it does seem like it's a particularly high risk. Although there is the element, I mean, I'm not an epidemiologist, but there is the, the notion that UV light, you know, kills the virus and if, I, I don't know, but I, I think I'm erring on the side of caution on this one too.
Well, the plan does say, open the playground only if we're prepared to sanitize it. And it sounds like until we get that figured out, maybe we move the playground down to phase three or beyond.
That, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, e- even phase two, that the state isn't in phase two yet.
Not yet.
Right. Yeah, so does this currently, this currently follows all of the got the state guidelines, phase two, phase three?
Those are, those are their guidelines. They, the phase that we're in.
Okay.
Neil, you had mentioned, you know, the slasher center being closed. When in seven days restaurants are open for 50% capacity, six foot distance inside. Is there any thought to restarting the senior lunches?
We haven't really discussed opening the slasher center yet, that we're sort of in phasing it in. That seems like it's, it's still down the road because there is a lot of contact and that's also a population that's most at risk.
Yeah, I, I agree. I was just curious.
So, since we don't even know exactly when the other phases will start, um, do we want to just, I mean, I don't see anything on here that, that is like glaring. I have a few concerns and I'd want some clarification on a few issues and, you know, like the softball games. There's a lot of, even if you're talking about adults, like when you're all grabbing the same equipment, that seems like a relatively high transmission endeavor. And then same with like the soccer camp, although that's not until August. But I guess in terms of like tonight, do we, Neil, what, what do you, what is helpful? Do we need to?
Kimball Pond is the, is the big thing.
Yeah.
For, for now. And I think Dan stayed on and he's, he's raised his hand. He's connected to softball. So I don't know if you can let him on and I think they're looking for some information too, so.
Hello?
We can hear you, Dan.
Good. So, I am affiliated with USA softball. I've been a coach for 14 years. And they, I don't know if you have the guidelines in front of you, if Paula sent those in. She asked me for them. They came up with a set of guidelines to send to the governor to, for approval and the governor approved them all. So we've had two practices. I have 18 plus and an 18-year-old. So, every time a ball gets touched, I mean, they throw it around, they're guided to not touch their, their faces or anything. As soon as that drill is done, they go get a drink of water, or they sanitize their hands first, then go get a drink of water. We sanitize all the softballs that were used. No one, everyone has to have their own equipment. No one can share other people's equipment. And any, the plan is moving forward, when we go to games, they are not required to wear a face mask on the field. But when they go in the dugout, they're required to wear a face mask. And anytime a ball leaves the field of play, it needs to be sanitized. They're not allowing coach meetings on the field. You want to talk to your team, you have to do it in the dugout. And if anyone's uncomfortable on the field, they can put the mask on and it's fine. But there's a whole set of guidelines that I, that I sent to Paula and every USA player in New Hampshire had to sign a waiver to not hold any facility or USA softball accountable if they contract COVID. And before any player could play, that had to be signed and turned in. And also, there will, will be no out of state teams allowed in the state to play. It's only New Hampshire against New Hampshire teams. And I basically, I guess I'm, I got people breathing down my neck. They need an answer because we're, their games tournament is scheduled in July and they-
Is that the Comets, Comet softball tourney?
Yep, that's the Comets one. And then there's another one, a few weeks later, the Lightning Tournament.
Okay. So that's not till mid-July anyway.
Correct. They're just, they're getting very nervous because they've had some issues with fields. So they're would like an answer tonight. If you can't give one tonight, maybe next week, if you had a little time to think about it.
I don't know if we have any sense when the governor will go to phase two or three. I don't know how soon that's coming.
So that's just my input.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you for that.
Neil, the phasing, was that, did Paula come up with that or like where did it? I mean, I know we're trying to follow the state, but like who decided softball goes under phase two or three?
That it matched what the state guidelines are.
Gotcha, okay.
Like, like the state is small groups use of non-household members and limited.
Ah, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Sort of summarized what those, those things did.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, like that all sounds reasonable to me, especially if we're talking like a month away. But if we're trying to stay sort of tied to the state, then that makes it a little harder to be able to commit to a firm date.
Yes, I, I, well, I mean, to me, it sounds like tonight we have to decide about Kimball Pond and all the field use and kind of public space stuff is less urgent. And I guess my comment on the field stuff is that, you know, it's going to be, it's going to get harder to differentiate. You know, if we give the green light or the yellow light or whatever to softball, but then continue to restrict tennis and other sort of pursuits.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it's just something to keep in mind. Because I can see someone being really upset, you know, if we, if we said yes to something but no to something else, but when you really look at the potential for exposure and compare the two, they're maybe not that different.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, the tennis and skate park says when phase two opens, same with field requests is when phase two or three. So they're probably going to be around the same time, but, and we have gotten another, at least one more email around tennis. So, for Kimball, I mean, I, I am okay with the pond recommendations. I guess, yeah, so we'll have the grant pay for the gate attendant. Porta potties, yeah. I mean, I, I think it looks pretty reasonable, the plan for Kimball Pond.
Yeah, I, I also in support of, of the Kimball Pond plan.
I'll sign on also.
Sure, me too.
And I'll bring back information on Kimball Cabin and is there any more information you want on any of the others for next week?
I guess my question, which maybe can be answered, is that all the other things it's, looks like would be opened up whenever the governor went to phase two, unless we imposed stricter requirements than at the state level? Okay.
The, there's, there's a, an item outdoor rec programs under phase one. Tai Chi, senior meditation, senior strength. Are those going on at this point?
They are not, no.
So she requesting to run those? Because it says under phase one, which we are currently in.
She, I think she's been thinking about them, but nothing is running at this point. Let me get more clarification on that too.
I mean, I guess the only other thing I'd add about all of this and particularly we're talking about Kimball Pond, this is sort of, this is all sort of an experiment. And I think as with any experiment, you have to be ready to adjust and be adaptable and nimble. And I think if, you know, and you know, maybe in either direction, so hopefully at some point we are able to relax some of these, you know, regular standards that we're trying to uphold, but you know, if we also are finding, I just think we have to maintain really good communication with the folks at the pond. And if, if we are finding that it's too difficult to monitor these things or, you know, God forbid, like sites are breaking out over like, I'm the 41st person here, like you have, like, I'm with my whatever. I don't, who knows, who knows what can happen, but I think we just have to be ready to adjust.
Yeah.
If necessary.
I agree. Everything's subject to change.
Yeah, so if there's some mechanism whereby, you know, because I, you know, maybe it happens on a Tuesday morning and we've just had a meeting and, you know, if we don't want to wait six more days, there just has to be some sort of mechanism whereby those adjustments can happen on the fly and not, not be up to us.
Certainly staff picks decisions all the time that have to be made.
Right.
Within the guidelines set by the board. So I don't think anyone's afraid to make those decisions if we have to.
Okay.
Um, do we also need to render a decision on swim lessons if we've said yes to the pond being open?
Probably.
It says no swim lessons in the plan, didn't it?
No, there's a separate.
They would be held not when the pond is open and be three children or less.
Right.
With social distancing.
Oh yeah, not during normal pond hours.
Right, but I think, I think there, I think, is Paula looking for us to say yes or no to that?
I think yes.
That's what I, that's the way I read it.
Looking for that. So she can start registering and advertising for those, that.
And again, that's something we do every year.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, that, that seems like pretty low risk. It's not during normal hours. It's limited to three kids.
I'm, I'm fine with that as well. The other, the other thing I was going to ask or prompt us to talk about was whether we wanted waivers.
Right, yeah.
Which is kind of at the bottom of this, kind of buried a little bit, but that seems like a pretty critical thing to think about.
Have you come across those in your work, Steven, at all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't want to be the one to give legal advice to the board, so I would say we should contact municipal association or, or town attorney. But yeah, they're out there. But yeah, they're out there. So.
Okay.
We're interested, they're there.
Yeah. So maybe we can put that on the list, Neil, to talk about with our, or to start with municipal.
Sure. Actually, Primex has sample waivers.
Oh, perfect. Yeah.
Well, what would be the downside of just requiring waivers to protect the town?
All right. If you can enforce them, great. If you can't, you're in the same position you were if they didn't sign on.
Right.
Well, if you want to be one of those 40 people, sign the waiver.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm personally in favor of us having them just because if nothing else, I think it makes people think twice about maybe some of their behavior. And then, you know, hopefully you don't need them to enforce them. But you know, it's another, another way to defend the town if that turns into an issue.
Yeah. So maybe we can look at a few examples and then decide like mechanisms for distribution and that sort of thing. Okay. So COVID-19, we already did the grant. So wait, Neil, you don't need anything else in this moment on rec, right?
Nope.
Okay.
Covers all those things.
So we already did highway projects. So that would just, we would have new business, town administrator updates. I would say maybe since we have five people still with us, if we want to do, I'm okay unless anyone objects doing public comment now. Just to let people off if they don't want to hear the other, the end of the meeting.
Works for me.
Sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Raise your hand if you'd like to speak. Public comment.
I have not seen.
Going once.
Going one?
Going twice. All right. Well, if no one wants to talk now, we'll, we'll be on for a little bit longer. So if something comes to your mind, just raise your hand. So that means we have year-to-date financials and any other updates from Neil?
Sure. One thing I will note is the governor has committed and did on Friday to assuring that we are going to get our room and meals tax, our block grant, and all of those are set by statute as well as plant control. So without legislative votes, those all should be coming the way we have budgeted them. So and the municipal association sent out a memo and that. So that's, that's sort of key to all of our budgeting process and all of that, that it looks like those things we will be receiving. No guarantee beyond this year, but it looks like what we've put in our proposed budget, we should meet those. Really under, under revenue, we're, we're doing about where we would expect to be. Motor vehicle seems to be catching up with where it was. There is, we did, we've already received, no, we haven't received yet. Our municipal aid, that's the other, the 49,000 that, that was the other thing that should be coming as, as we've been told. So there wasn't really in, except for things with timing, nothing under revenue that I had concern about on expenses. Largely the same thing. I think we're staying really level. I think we're pretty close to what we expended last year. So we're staying pretty close to that, that budget. Not knowing where we're going and most of the things on the cemetery looks high, but that gets reimbursed from the trust funds. And all the other things that are high, it's really timing and things that have happened at the beginning of the year. So in general, we're about where we would expect to be considering we don't have a budget.
Thanks, Neil. Okay.
Neil, Brittany, can I just ask Neil a question?
Yeah.
Have you heard from the municipal association about whether there's going to be an order about annual meetings from the governor?
They think so.
That's what I've heard too. I just didn't know if you had anything more concrete. So, okay.
In the very near future, like maybe this week, but I've been hearing that for a long time.
Yeah, so have I. Okay. Thanks.
Standing is, Ken had asked about a default budget that that option, which had been requested from the municipal association, was not looked on very favorably and would not be, would not be something that could take place. But there, I know one of the things they presented was the bow option, basically. So.
The wheels are falling off here. All right. So let's see. Do we have any other administrator updates or anything other, other?
I'll just note a couple of things real quickly. Tax bills went out last Monday. So we've had lots of assessing questions, but they are out. The school has requested to use the gazebo for the school board chair, Jim O'Brien, and superintendent Chamberlain to meet with people to answer questions. They would do it in a socially, socially distancing way. Is there any objection to them doing that? In that outside space, they thought that would be a good space to use.
I, I don't have an issue.
Okay. Um, and we did receive a call today and they had also called the police department that there is a plan for a march. So on June 16th, from six to 7:30, meeting at the library and doing a, a march down to the gazebo and back. So that's on June 16th, but I don't, we don't require anything for that. And they had already talked to the police when they called, when they talked to me. So the police are aware.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I don't think we have anything else besides non-public. We jumped around a little bit here, but I think we covered everything. Not yet. So, all right, no one's raised their hands. I, I'm guessing there's no. Oh, we have a hand. So I'll, I'll allow a little public comment before we go into non-public.
Can you hear me? Hello. Hi, this is Diane LaChance at 264 Amesbury Road. I just wanted to comment on the tax exemption issue that you've been discussing tonight. And I haven't followed it before. This is the first I've heard about it and I will do a little more research, but all the properties in town, I believe all of them, I know ours was reassessed recently. One of the reasons that we were told for the increase in the assessment value of our homes or was the demand for homes is greater than the supply. So just at that level of thought in taxes and what we're paying, I don't understand why we would even be considering giving somebody who's building property that's going to be, fill that supply that we need. And I don't think they're going to have any problem selling the property. I'm not sure why the rest of us need to contribute to that. So I'm open to listening to more about you, about your decision, but that was my, my first take on it. And I appreciate the opportunity to express those feelings. Thanks.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you. I don't know if people want to comment on it now. Diane, we are going to plan on talking about it next Monday as well. So I'm just going to mute quickly if anyone else wants to comment. I guess my only, Anna, you can go ahead.
No, I mean, I think a couple of things. One is that, you know, the town voted as a, as a voting body to adopt 79E. And so the town has decided, you know, I, I understand that circumstances change year to year, but the towns decided that this is something that they believe is valuable as an incentive to revitalize properties. And, you know, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that we're in a very different economic situation now than perhaps when that was adopted. So it's certainly something to consider, but I think one of the, one of the reasons, so we've mentioned it before, that the, the tax relief will allow, could allow, hopefully will allow for a sort of, I don't know how to say, but like a, a, a deeper level of restoration on a property. I mean, that's sort of the, the intended goal is that you are providing relief so that that money can be put back into the structure and potentially without it, there's, you know, less. You know, I, I'm not a developer either. So I can't say for sure, but there's potentially, you know, less not as high a level of rehab if you don't provide it. So that's just, that's one, you know, it's, that's all in the theoretical and in the philosophical. It's not in actuality because I can't speak to Bo Wood's, you know, situation in particular, but that's sort of the, the thinking. Others have stuff to add.
Yeah, I would, I would just add for the conversation, I've already, already said I'm supportive of the, the request. And to me, you know, if it satisfies one of those public benefit criteria, which I think it does, and it's consistent with the master plan and with the uses that are allowed, which it is, then I think that they're, under the statute, they, they are deserving of some, some relief. And then the the discretionary part comes in when we talk, or we, when we figure out how long of a period they get it for. And that's the part that I haven't settled on yet. And that's, I think, the main part of the conversation that's going to continue next week. So yeah, I just, I just wanted to say thank you for your comments because I think they're, they're well made and you raised some good points. And I think all of this will be part of the discussion that we have on Monday. When we take a formal vote on whether they're going to get any relief and if so, for how long. But thank you.
Yeah. I, I also would say thank you for the question. And I just have one more thing to add, which is that we talk a lot about, you know, the idea of economic development in town. And we're trying to bring, you know, our tax base up and this, you know, 70, having 79E can really help to re-revitalize, you know, our, our village and can allow developers who, and it's not only for housing, they could potentially get additional years for housing. But you know, it, if it's, if it's known that Hopkinton is a town with 79E, it can serve as an incentive for folks to come in and, and really provide some of that economic development that I think we're starting to recognize that we really need. So that's another piece of it.
I, I'd agree that it seems to meet the criteria that the town had approved. And the issue is simply how long do we give a tax break for?
All right. Thank you for the public comment. If there's no other hands, then I think we can move on to our non-publics. All right. So
I am LaChance. Did she identify her, she did identify herself, but her address, did we get it too?
I got it.
Sorry, I didn't.
Okay, it's Amesbury.
Thanks, Robin.
You're welcome.
Does someone want to make a motion to go into non-public?
Sure. I'll move, we go into non-public under RSA 91A colon three, Roman two, little a personnel, followed by 91A colon two, small b, for hiring.
I'll second that. All right.
And we'll note that no further business will be conducted and we'll adjourn directly after the non-public sessions.
That's right. Yeah. So do a roll call vote. Sabrina's yes, Ken?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Thank you, members of the public who joined us and stuck with us.
With us.
We'll be back next week.
Sooner. Bye.
Thanks, Robin.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
You too. I'm no longer alone in my room. That probably is a problem for non-public. So I will move my location.